Good morning, everybody. Good to see your lovely faces here in the audience and welcome to our May 23 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And we're going to start out first with the questions and acclamations of Supervisor Arroyo, who could not join us in person but is here via Zoom, and there's a little process we've got to go through.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Madron. Pursuant to AB 2449, Supervisor Arroyo will be participating remotely today in accordance with that government regulation. Supervisor Arroyo will need to confirm if there are any attendees in the room with her and if anybody is under 18, as well as give a brief description of the need for the remote participation today. Furthermore, she will need to take roll call votes throughout the meeting and she will need to remain on camera for the duration of the meeting.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. And Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. Good morning. There is no one in the room with me, although I do need to close the door as my spouse is working from home, and there's no one under the age of 18 either. And I am participating remotely as I am sick with COVID.
All right. Thank you very much, and we all wish you good health. Thank you for participating. And so with that, we'll do a roll call.
Thank you, Chair Madron. Supervisor Arroyo, we'll start with you.
I'm here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Supervisor Bone?
Here.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning. Thank you.
And if you'll please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Here's the proclamation. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Great. Thank you very much. We always appreciate that robust participation. So we have, do we have any modifications to the agenda? CIO Hayes?
Chair Madron, there are no modifications today.
Lovely. All right. Well, we're going to jump into our consent agenda, and we have a couple of proclamations and resolutions that we're going to read as usual. And then after we do that, we will take public comment and then we'll deliberate on adopting the consent agenda. So we'll start out with the first one on the list, which is a, we're going to proclaim May 2023 as Caregiver Appreciation Month. And I think we all recognize how important our caregivers are in our community. And so with that, it's a long one, so bear with me. Whereas May is National Foster Care Month, and in Humboldt County, we celebrate Caregiver Appreciation Month, which includes resource parents, tribally-approved homes, relatives, non-related extended family members, and caregivers working with youth living in short-term residential therapeutic programs. And whereas these caregivers welcome into their homes children and youth ranging from newborns to non-minor dependents up to 21 years of age. And whereas there are 286 county children in our out-of-home care being provided with safe, secure, stable, and nurturing homes with compassionate families. And whereas these caregivers practice a high standard of skilled parenting by being willing to seek out resources and training to help children cope with trauma, loss, and separation through developmental life stages while ensuring educational services, as well as medical and dental care are provided. And whereas these caregivers are valued members of the child and family team dedicated to supporting, mentoring, and advocating for children and their families, and are vital to ensuring that children remain in their communities. And whereas these caregivers are open to maintaining lifelong connections to children, youth, and families, and are essential to supporting reunification and permanency by keeping children connected. And whereas these caregivers meet a special need in our community by ensuring children and youth receive the attention they need, the respect they deserve, and unconditional love. And whereas Humboldt County caregivers deserve our gratitude and respect for the work they do every day, now therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims May 2023 as Caregiver Appreciation Month. And thanks resource parents, tribally-approved caregivers, relatives, non-related extended family members, and caregivers working with youth living in short-term residential therapeutic programs for their dedication to Humboldt County children and youth. Is there someone here today to accept this proclamation? Are you coming up to accept the proclamation? Great. Fantastic.
Hi there. I'm Ivy Brain. I'm a deputy director for Child Welfare Services, and I really, really want to extend my gratitude to our substitute care provider community. Without them, our children would not have the support and love and care that they need at a really trying time. And so they really are, you know, they're heroes and wonderful people that give, open their homes and their hearts and provide love. And so with that, I just wanted to say thank you. We do have some care providers here, and just want to say thank you to them and our entire care provider community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And did any one of the care providers want to come up and speak, or we'll just thank you? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And next, we have, let's see, it is a resolution and certificate in recognition of one of our centarians. Supervisor Bushnell?
So on the screen, you can see this is Chris Schosma, and she turned 100 on May 15th, and she's from Southern Humboldt. And so I wanted to read something. That's her little puppy there, and she had a fabulous time at a party her children threw for her on Saturday, and it was, she was all smiles. Said she hadn't gotten that many hugs in forever. So Chris Ola Carey, known most by Chris Schosma, turned 100 years old on May 15th, 2023. Chris grew up on Bald Hill, Bald Mountain above Corral in Northern Humboldt with her three brothers and three sisters. After attending Arcata High School, Chris and her family moved to Southern Humboldt, where she secured a job working as a waitress in Garberville Restaurant. While working at the restaurant, Chris met and eventually married the love of her life, Louis Schosma. As a longtime resident and business owner in Southern Humboldt, Chris owned and operated Chris's flowers and gifts with her husband Louis until his passing in 2008. They were married for 61 years. Having, Chris having witnessed the roaring twenties, the Great Depression, World War II, the invention of the color TV, and so many more, Chris's secret for a long life is a busy person is a happy person. So I want to congratulate Chris on her 100th year birthday. She's looking forward to 101 and say what a great party that her kids threw for her over the weekend.
Wonderful. Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. And listening to the K-Mud report a week or two ago in regards to this, I was really taken by the part where she said that they got the first color TV in Redway, California, and every Sunday night, all the kids in the neighborhood came about to watch Disney. Right? You all remember that, those of us that are old enough to remember that period? It was really quite special. So thank you for honoring her.
Of course. Chris and Louis have been a staple in Southern Humboldt for ever, obviously, as long as I can remember. Louis had a business in Redway, a scrap business, and Chris had the flower shop. That was about the only flower shop in Southern Humboldt for as long as I can remember. And, you know, they are a logging family and just really staples of Southern Humboldt and have many grandkids. And their kids, one of their son Jim lives in the Ziny area and is a hunter rancher up there, and so they're just a really great family.
Yeah, thank you. And I was also enamored by the fact that they maybe were the creators of the original tiny homes, and they had their first home on Redwood Log Skids because they might need to move it. So quite an amazing couple there. So, all right. Any other board comments on that? Okay. It looks like we're good to go ahead and move forward with the next one, which is also Supervisor Bushnell, and that's a letter of appreciation for Harry Vaughn.
Oh.
You can just.
Yeah, I'm just going to say thank you to Harry Vaughn, who has been the fishing game, on the Fishing Game Advisory Committee. He wasn't my appointee. I think he's, and I should read the letter. I can't remember how long he's been there, but I really wanted to thank him. He is not able to refill that seat as he is doing some fire reduction work in the Southern Humboldt area and is quite busy. So I want to really thank him.
Yeah, and Harry was one of the grandfathers of the Watershed Restoration Movement in Humboldt County, along with many other folks down there in the Redwood Creek area around Redway, when they first started up in the late 70s doing projects to bring back our fisheries. So thank you, Harry, for your lifetime dedication to that effort. So nice to honor him. Thank you for that. Any other board members have any comment there? Okay. Our next one is to proclaim May 2023 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage. So, and that's Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Let's hear it. So I just wanted to recognize that the Asian American and Pacific Islander community within Humboldt County and all the really amazing work that's been happening in the last few years, and also recognize some of the both harsh and also beautiful history with relationship to those communities in Humboldt County. Whereas on May 1st, 2009, President Obama issued the Presidential Proclamation 8369, proclaiming May 2009 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas Asian American Pacific Islander Month is a month to celebrate and recognize the contribution of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to Humboldt County, American society, culture, and history. And whereas generations of API of all backgrounds have been inspirational examples of leaders, trailblazers, and have longstanding history of making esteemed, significant cultural, economic, and community contributions across the United States, California, and Humboldt County. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders includes a multiple, multitude of diverse ethnic and cultural backgrounds and comprise 3.5% of the population of Humboldt County, but represent a growing population with a long history in our region. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Month is a month to celebrate and recognize contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to Humboldt County, American society, culture, and history. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders serve Humboldt County in a myriad of roles, which include but are not limited to community members, entrepreneurs, academics, business leaders, physicians, teachers, and students in a variety of organizations. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders consistently demonstrate their resilience even in the face of increased hate events. And whereas several local Asian American Pacific Islander-based organizations are leading work to make Humboldt County a more inclusive community and enrich the lived experience for all who reside in this county. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby designate May 2023 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month and recognize the significant contribution members of this community that have made Humboldt County, California, and the United States. And I just want to just recognize all the celebrations that have come up in the last few years with the Chinese New Year and the Lao New Year celebrations that have just really flourished and grown, and all the hard work that people have been putting into those, as well as the alley upgrade and celebrations around that in Eureka with the recognition of the Chinese populations of the past. And just, I have to say, it's just been very inclusive, and I have also been very encouraged by the local university and its clubs, and well as our high schools are now actually expanding on these clubs as well, just creating inclusive community. And so this is just a recognition of that. And that's all I got.
Great. Thank you very much, Supervisor Wilson. And Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, thanks for bringing this. As a six-year-old that used to hang around in Ben Chin's garage out in Myrtle Town, his son was a good friend of mine, and then the legacy of Chin's Restaurant, he was actually the first Chinese allowed to live in the city of Eureka. And then the Pacific Islanders, I think we run deep here. My son, best friend, the Oppos, the Vanukus, we have a, go to Sammy's today, tell them thank you. But we have a rich heritage that is, it's nice to recognize them, but that a lot of us have always recognized them. So, good stuff.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I just want to add on my thoughts about this, and thank you, Supervisor Wilson, for bringing it forward. I'm so thrilled to see, in particular, all the work with the Eureka Chinatown Project and the beautiful celebrations that have been occurring. And Supervisor Madron, thank you so much for mentioning the Lao New Year celebration that just happened as well. It's a sad, frankly, really sad history, like many of the things that, you know, we've done in the past. And I think it's, it's pretty remarkable to see the effect that taking some responsibility for righting the wrongs of the past and celebrating and honoring the people that are making our communities more vibrant and wonderful today is having. So just wanted to lift up this proclamation, say, you know, how important it is that we all both understand our history and celebrate what makes each culture unique. I think, you know, I, when I was a kid, you know, I'm a child of the 80s, and, you know, there was a lot of focus on, we're all the same. We're all just, you know, we're all just people, and we're all the same. And I really appreciate that now we're celebrating the things that do make us different and the ways that that is beautiful. So thank you for bringing this forward, and glad to honor this month.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you for that. And that is all of our proclamations, resolutions that set around the consent agenda. Any other questions on the consent from the board before we go to the public and then come back to consider a motion? Seeing none, we will go to the public, and we'll start with Zoom as I usually do. There are two people there, but I do not see any hands up. And this is for comment on the consent agenda, and you got in just under the wire. There you go. 2122, this is your chance for a public comment on the consent agenda. Please let us know which item you're speaking on, and you have three minutes. Press star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Okay. Forgive me. I thought this was for non-agendized items. I'll try.
No worries. We'll be doing that next for non-agenda items. Okay. Seeing no other hands up in Zoom, we'll go to those in the audience today. Welcome. Three minutes. Tell us which item you're speaking on.
Ken Swawski, I have my hand up, and I'd like to speak on number four to start with. The Caregivers Appreciation. I'd like to see this board put their money and time where their mouth is on this and give the IHHS workers what they're entitled to, and I'd like to see that agendized, hopefully next meeting be accomplished. I did make comment on that last meeting yesterday. I also did, also did wish to speak regarding, oh, the Asian American and Pacific. I'm so lucky, the Filipino community is flourishing here. How would I know? Well, I was talking to my granddaughter Izzy, and her mother comes from there. And same as I do also have a, my grandchildren are, their mother came from Mexico. So unfortunately, some people have referred to me as a racist, but I'm so in favor of all these people, I can't see how they would do that. But anyway, I did also wish to speak on a few other items here. Item D1, our aviation, there's 4.5 million, we're adding a little bit to that. Hopefully, we won't violate the contract we have with the FFA, FAA, or else they could claw back all that money in the future, and we don't want to be in that position again. Did want to speak on item D2. Yesterday, we had a budget hearing, and we have a lot of, a lot of problems not having money, and yet this is an anomaly I've never seen before. We had one supervisor spending 1,800, another 1,300, another 2,000. And Ms. Arroyo, thank you for participating during COVID. For you, that was $83. And Michelle normally has something around $300 to $500 for travel. She comes from way down south and gets her gas money back. But I think these kind of things, and the mention that we're going to be sending people off, and we need to send our staff off, to all these things, needs to be clawed back. And I know there's benefits to it, and you may feel that outweighs the money that's being spent, but the public perception is we need to Zoom these particular meetings, cut down on our carbon imprint, and cease and desist on that. So there was also D3 had to do with the port, trying to make the port realize that we're only going to do wind, we're not going to do oil or anything through our port again. But we have the largest natural gas and oil reserve. My understanding is one of the largest in the world right off our coast. Eventually, they will do that. The Fed will go ahead and do that. So we might as well face facts on that particular one. I think that pretty well takes care of my consent items for today. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. I'll use my 29 minutes back to you folks.
29 seconds.
29 seconds. 29 minutes. Okay, I'll take it.
Thank you very much. And just for the public's information, we did claw back 33% of our travel budget yesterday in our deliberations because we're all tightening our belt. We know that we need to do that. So thank you for your comments. Please, come on up. Welcome.
Chair and Supervisor Steve Madron, Vice Chair Rex Bone, our Supervisor Michelle Bushnell, Supervisor Mike Wilson, and Supervisor Natalie Arroyo. I'm Steve Davis, and I also want to give my best appreciation to our resource parents, our caregivers, those with our child welfare services with the additional hope that people will be helping the biologically connected parents and grandparents, all those in the family systems of our future generations, that they will find resources and abilities to continue education and work in our Humboldt County and beyond. It's just great to meet people that have lived long and well, like our Chris Schosmas and her celebration of 100 years, and all of those that have been gainfully employed here in Humboldt County. It's extra blessings to have been raised with excellent Asian Americans, the Ogata family, that I still treasure the Asian wisdom and sensibilities that we here in Humboldt County and beyond should honor at all ages. And thank you again for your leadership and proclamations, more and still more, and keeping our Humboldt County sustainable and civil, and a hopeful encouragement to our great state and our great country as they grapple with balancing their budgets and honoring people too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next? Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County. My name is Vernon Price. I'm here to speak on item number 12, the extended, extra help extending of 960 hours, 5% increase of their hours. We are very gratefully appreciative of this. We do have one question, though. What is the time of implementation of this once this is moved upon? Would they be able to come back to work Wednesday or?
I would ask the CIO if she has an answer to that question.
This will be effective immediately. It's just extending the overall hours for the whole year, so there should be no interruption in services.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. Yes, any other public comment on the consent agenda? And let us know what you're speaking on, please.
My name's Adam. I'm also speaking on number 12. I'm a participant there, and I actually am the one that wrote three letters here to you guys. So our center needs them. May is with their health was very hard because our people couldn't get there, they used to get rides because they live in the area. And we have workers that have to have days off. And like yesterday, we're down to two workers, and that's not good. So I also would like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing no movement for that from the audience, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a second, and I'd like to make a comment. That's okay. Please.
I do, sorry. I do want to highlight the item number three, the support for SB 704, California Coastal Act of 1976 Industrial Developments, Oil and Gas Facilities Offshore Wind Letter of Support. I appreciate the board's support for this. It just basically aligns with our policy that we already have, which is a anti-offshore oil stance that we have already taken in the past. And this just aligns with allowing the state to adjust with relationship to land use law and so that we can, so that both the Coastal Commission and Humboldt County can align with relationship to supporting renewable energy versus fossil fuels in our land use. Thanks.
Thank you for that. So Supervisor Bone?
And I want to, on number 18, I want to thank DHHS for reaching out. We had a report yesterday of $83 million being spent through CalFresh and using these funds to reach out to different organizations, especially our Family Resource Centers and the success that they show. I think we are now sitting on 18 Family Resource Centers. If I'm, I'm pretty close. It's like horseshoes. But I think the idea of getting it out there and getting, because we don't, I think we're probably still at seven, we were down into the 60s, but I think we're probably 75, 80% of using our fulfilling what, who is available for CalFresh. And I think that right now for food securities and everything else, we're going to get our best bang for the buck. So I appreciate DHHS reaching out, finding people, and extending these programs to allow our Family Resource Centers to do that and keep their lights on. It's twofold, so, thanks.
Great. Well, this would be one of those opportunities where we can applaud for thanking DHHS and our Family Resource Centers. Thank you, everybody, and thank you all the DHHS staff and all those folks at those centers. So, and with that, we have a motion to approve by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Wilson. And are we using our vote tabs this morning?
We need to do roll call for everything.
Okay, roll call, please. That's right, because of the attendance issue. Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell? Yes. Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so we'll do roll call votes on everything today. And now we have an opportunity for a public comment on non-agenda items. These are items that are not on our agenda, and we typically do not respond to these items because they are not agendized. We'll start with Zoom, and I do not see any hands up. There is one person there, but no hand up. And so we'll come here to the audience today. This is your opportunity to speak on non-agenda items. Three minutes, please. Welcome.
Ken Swawski, I'm sure you'll be monitoring Zoom to see if that person does raise their hand because they raised it before. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on non-agendized items. Boy, there's so many things to talk about that are not on our agenda today that we need to discuss. Just so you know, it's some interesting times in the city of Blue Lake. I get a double dip. I get to go to two meetings once a month here, so I have agendas in both places. The city of Blue Lake is going through some rather interesting times. I wanted to highlight a little bit of what's happening there. They haven't updated their general plan since, I think Steve Madron was part of it back then, Chair Madron, since '86, I believe, is when they did that. And so they have a lot of major problems. They are trying to do their housing element, and yet the housing element has to determine it's consistent with the general plan in zoning, but it isn't. And so they're kind of in a catch-22, which is a position that unfortunately, I don't think when Steve was on there, but a few of our city council but a few of our city council members in the past just decided to shy in the housing element. They said, we're not going to do it. We're not going to update it. So it hasn't been updated for two cycles. This is a third cycle and a very difficult thing. I'm so happy that, according to John Ford, ours is updated. We're in good shape because otherwise, there's going to be a lot of funds lost by anybody who has not updated their thing. We are lacking updating and finishing our general plan, and there's not a consistency there. If someone were to object to your housing element next time it came for review, I highly recommend you finish your general plan, and it's consistent through the whole process. Otherwise, you might lose your ability to have that reaffirmed. So anyway, those are some interesting things that I find out there. I think later on, we're going to talk about the cigarette issue, so I'll save that one for that one in specifics. I got back from Mexico, a wonderful trip down there. I do affordable housing, and I'm attempting to do a place for the seniors to go to. I can't remember exactly what the term is, but it's a special place for the people to go to. And it looks like down there, up here, we're paying five to ten thousand dollars a month for somebody being assisted living. That's what it was, assisted living. Well, down there, I think I'll probably be able to do it in a place where it's probably eighty degrees, two blocks or three blocks away from a nice beach on the ocean there, and probably for twenty-five hundred. So people wonder, why am I going to Mexico to do my work that I can do down there? And there'll be a much better facility, in my opinion, for that kind of price.
Thirty seconds.
So I strongly recommend that people consider all the options of Mexico for healthcare, dentist work, and also when you want to retire someday and live for quite a bit less, in other words, live on your total fifteen hundred dollars or something down there. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today on these particular items, and off we go.
Thank you. Next, please. Welcome.
Thank you, Supervisors, Chair and Vice Chair. I am grateful to have met Mike Dale Uber, our General Manager of our U-Haul self-storage units and parking lot in McKinleville. And I'm once again here to ask for your support, Steve Madrone and others, to consider how to approve and facilitate self-storage, charity storage, artist showcases, history showcases, and more in this grand space. I've been working on this for months, and they tell me this morning they still have to have approval from the organizations and people to reopen the beautiful indoor storage units that will make nice showcases and self-storage units. They have hundreds of square boxes that they will take to people's places, bring them back. And yet, the news was you couldn't sell from these storage units. And I'd like to try and raise money for people who need money and for our great charity organizations in some capacity with an ideal date to aim for of July two. So thank you for your consideration of supporting our entrepreneurs and artists and the people who have invested in these grand spaces. And thank you also for continued work on eliminating the eyesore blight places that continue to offer our carpenters and investors places for much-needed affordable housing. And I really look forward to this summer and planning good charity events for more dollars and people helping people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with comment on non-agenda items? And I do see one hand up in Zoom. I will go ahead and call on that. It's just one hand. And so that is the number ending in zero one five one. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi, this is Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. And I'm trying to get rid of my feedback, sorry. First of all, thank you for taking this call. I tried to do it on another phone, and something went wrong, and I couldn't get on. So thank you for acknowledging that I could get on this time. I wanted to talk about this whole aspect of Mental Health Month, which of course is always, but it's nice that we're celebrating it and paying extra attention to it. So recently, there are a number of people in Southern Humboldt unable to get their PG and E taken care of, and there's some question of possible evictions. And they were told to call RCIA, which is wonderful. They were given the telephone number, also wonderful. The problem is that Monday morning at nine o'clock, you have to call. And after calling, one person in particular called eighteen times, couldn't get through, and eventually the line was cut off. So I think it's pretty unreasonable to ask somebody that has some difficulty handling their life and trying to overcome obstacles to be on a telephone line that is a borrowed phone to call to get help with electricity. So if we could put together something that's very clear that can be done, I'm willing to offer a small location in Southern Humboldt for free to the county and pay for a frontier line, which is a, I guess it's a lifeline that's very inexpensive if it can be manned by somebody that is getting a grant or some Family Resource Center or something so that these people have access to a phone. They're not getting help. They're not getting what they need, and we need to be paying attention to that. Additionally, I'd like to know if there's somebody on the Board of Supervisors that we can call directly when there's a problem, getting help from in-home supportive services tied with adult protective services. There's a fellow that has not ended up getting his in-home support since the request from adult protective services. He's had two strokes, and he's had three amputations, and they still haven't set up in-home supportive services. So I would love a telephone call so that we can talk to somebody about this and how to correct this problem because it's just not humane. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much. And I see the DHHS staff have noted your request. So thank you very much. I guess that concludes our public comment on non-agenda items. And we do have a time set at ten-thirty and at eleven, and obviously, we're not there yet. So we're going to go ahead and continue with the agenda. And the next item is G one. Consider supporting a proposal to apply the new name of Salamander Creek to an officially unnamed stream that flows into Mill Creek near McKinleville. And this is a simple, basic process from a federal agency. Local residents have requested this name. It's not a name change. It's an unnamed tributary to Mill Creek. And often, those things are approved, but they look to the local jurisdiction to see if that name change would be supportive. And so it's here before us today. So I'll bring it to the board for any comments, questions, before we take public comment. Anybody on the board have any comments? Questions? No. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. I don't know if this will start an influx, and everybody has an unnamed ditch going to or creek going through there. Because I understand this is on Salamander Ranch, and the person lives on Bayside, and I know that there were some violations. I'm not sure if they were fishing game, but some moving dirt stumps and other things that took place. But I don't see where it's a problem. Did this, you made it sound, this didn't come from a federal. This is a personal ask from one individual, right?
It's a personal ask to a federal agency that governs these name changes. And so then the federal agency sends a request to us to ask us where we are at on it.
I'd move to accept even before public comment because I don't know, I think all these people are here for that, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Bone and a second by Supervisor Wilson. Any other questions, clarifications, comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. We have one person in Zoom, no hand up there. So we'll go here to the audience today for three minutes on this agenda item. Welcome.
This will be very brief. We do, I'm sure there's Salamanders Creeks, Salamander and Salamander Ranch, but we seem to be renaming everything these days. And I really, I really find that a little bit disturbing. I love the name Mad River, and it gives anybody a chance to be mad about anything that happened. And hopefully, that name will stay on that particularly. I mean, we can be mad the way our indigenous people were treated. We can be angry about things. But I really, I really question the cost that's involved, like Humboldt State's cost when they went to Polytechnic, and now they have to put the signs in and just renaming everything. I like to see the historical names that have been there, even if they're inappropriate. It does remind us of things that may have been, like Squaw Valley was renamed. Well, you know, I can understand the angst in those things. But on the other hand, it's best to learn from these things. And people say, well, remind us of some of the things we do that were inappropriate in the naming of things. Maybe all the names don't have to be changed. Have no problem with Salamander Creek becoming an official creek named Salamander Creek.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else here today wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
All right, we will start with you, Chair Madrone.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yep.
And Supervisor Bone? Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Great, and moving right along, we'll go to H one, which is an update on Child Care Stabilization Fund effort funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, or otherwise known as ARPA. Welcome.
Morning, Chair Madrone, members of the board. Sean Quincy, Deputy County Administrative Officer in the County Administrative Office. In March of 2020, roughly one-third of Humboldt County's open childcare centers closed. This was at the onset of the pandemic. Nearly ten percent of the local childcare centers closed permanently. During the pandemic, the local, our Economic Development Division surveyed local businesses to ask them what they needed most to sustain their businesses in the long term. And one of their most pressing needs was to ensure that their workers and staff had childcare. In response, your board made the biggest investment with the ARPA money, the federal relief money that you received. You made the biggest investment in local childcare. And exactly just about a year ago today, we executed a contract with Arcata Economic Development Corporation to implement a local childcare stabilization fund. That stabilization fund is administered by AEDC in partnership with really our local childcare kind of all-star team. And that team is here to give an update on the progress of that program so far. And so I'd like to welcome them up to the podium to help deliver a presentation.
Welcome.
Had you not looked back, and you're like, I hope she's here. We wouldn't stand you up. You guys know, any chance to talk about childcare, I will be there. So we do have a PowerPoint. Do you guys have it set up, or we brought it on a flash drive in case you needed it next?
Do you have the flash drive? I don't have it.
We brought it just in case.
Thank goodness.
I do want to say while we're starting that we'll probably repeat some of the stuff that Sean was talking about. But the move that you guys made to make this investment last year is truly groundbreaking and showing Humboldt County as a leader in this issue that came up during COVID is one that was only, not only important in Humboldt County, but across the country. So kudos for really having that foresight to think about how this investment of children is not only important for the economy, which is critical, but also for the development of children and all of these other things we've talked about today with Family Resource Centers and DHHS and making sure that children have good homes and access to good areas to develop. So you're getting double duty on your investment.
Wonderful, thank you.
Never mind, I found it. Sorry, hold on. You can keep talking if you have more to say.
So, okay, so we'll just kind of go away from this, and then when the thing comes back on. I am going to have Jade Hoff here. She is the Program Manager that we hired to run our programs. As Sean was mentioning, we are working with a team. AEDC is the fiscal administrator. We make sure that the money gets out in the way that it's supposed to, and we're tracking it, and all of those good things that you're going to want for your reporting. But really, the expertise comes from our partners. So we have an accountability team, which includes the first five Humboldt, Changing Tides Family Services, Humboldt County Office of Education, the County of Humboldt. I think that's all of them. First five, changing, yeah. Right on. So we're going to go just a bit more into the background as we were mentioning before. So we lost thirty percent of our childcare businesses during COVID. Six percent of them we lost permanently. This is wonderful information to have. As you know, data is really important to help us make important decisions. And that came from Changing Tides Family Services. But as we'll discuss later, collecting even more data to be able to tell a better story so that we could develop stronger plans for the future is part of our plan as well. It became apparent to everybody else that childcare was an issue. This is something that I've been working on for many years. And it wasn't until COVID happened and kids were staying at home with their kids, and they were trying to work, that people suddenly realized that childcare is really necessary in order for us to be productive employees. A childcare provider can have a different, you know, they can be licensed for a different number. But a large childcare family can have twelve children. That can allow up to twelve workers to go to have jobs. So for every small family home that is open, which is a business in itself, that could be six to twelve employees that are able to go work for the county or for your local hospital or for the schools. And so what we saw was a lot of people were saying that the childcare providers themselves make barely over minimum wage sometimes. Like many of those caregiving careers, it is really difficult to actually make a living doing it. And so a lot of childcare providers have been figuring out how to do other things. And when they do, that leaves us with fewer opportunities. And this is the crazy thing. This was even before COVID. Only twenty-five percent of the families who needed childcare or eighty percent of the families looking for childcare could not find it when they needed it from licensed childcare providers. So now they're trying to piece together friends, families, neighbors who can take their kids. Maybe they're in some less desirable circumstances, and maybe they just can't work at all. So in 2022, a year ago, you guys voted to allocate four point eight six million dollars to this in case you forgot how much it was. And we are really going to be good stewards with that and come and look at this issue from every aspect. And as I mentioned before, here is our accountability team. And then you go. And so now I'm going to introduce Jade to talk about our programs. That's where the excitement is, what we have done so far and what we're looking to do in the next couple of years. So Jade.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Jade Hoff, and as Susan mentioned, I'm the Program Manager for the Child Care Stabilization Programs. This slide is showing the programs that we have planned. And some of them are the ones that we're doing, and I'll go into more detail on them. But we have a forgivable facility loan program. It's offering ten thousand dollars, basically a grant, but we're using a loan apparatus to ensure the money is being spent correctly to childcare providers to improve their facilities. We have four hundred thousand dollars set aside for education support to support those who are going into the childcare industry. We have over two million dollars allocated for retention bonuses to help out those who worked during COVID and who have. COVID and who have chosen to stay in the field going forward. We have hiring bonuses to encourage people to enter the field as well. And we also have working family subsidies. The retention bonus program is being run in two, two rounds. So we had our first round open last September and concluded early this year. And we have a second round starting in July. And that, the first round, we gave out over $600,000 to 410 providers and their employees. And so this is how, this is the breakdown. So for a full-time employee working for the entirety of the eligibility period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022, they got $1,500, part-time $1,000. And then the providers themselves, if they had a small family childcare home that's providing care for up to eight children, they got $2,000. A large family home is 2,500 and then a childcare center is 3,000. And all of those bonuses were prorated. So if they worked at least half the time during the eligibility period, they were able to get some funding. We're really trying to make sure that everybody who works in the childcare industry gets something during this time. And so that was the best way we could do that. And yeah, like, like I said, we'll be starting another round in July. So it'll be at least double, if not a little bit more. I have several contacts who weren't eligible for the first round, but they'll be getting some payment during the second round. This is a geographic breakdown of where the funding went during that first round. So we can see, you know, there was a lot going out to our large population centers where most of our childcare availability is. And then here's a map of where we sent out all of the checks. And so we can definitely see that there's room for improvement for additional childcare facilities. And that's something that we are working on with, with some partners. We went out to Hoopa earlier this month to meet with some family, friend and neighbor providers to encourage them to become licensed childcare providers so they could go from caring for one family to, you know, up to eight or even 14 kids. And that would provide a lot of stabilization for childcare availability in that outlying area. And we have additional road trips planned down to Southern Humboldt and to Bridgeville as well. This is one of our testimonials from that first round. Elizabeth says, "Our field is often overlooked and seen as merely babysitting, but we do so much more for children and their families during COVID. In the last three years, early childhood education workers were really stretched thin while trying to care for Humboldt County's youngest residents, ourselves and our own families. This bonus made me feel truly appreciated and valued by the county. Thank you Humboldt County for looking out for our ECE workers." So another program we have that's going on right now and we are accepting applications for is our hiring bonus. So anybody who started working in the childcare industry as of the beginning of this year is eligible for five, 500 to $1,000 after completing 90 days of employment. This is available for all new employees of licensed childcare facilities. And we are also including anybody who wants to open a childcare facility. So anybody who moves from that family, friend and neighbor to a licensed facility, they would be eligible to receive this bonus after they've been open. And we were actually able to leverage similar funding that the Office of Education had access to. So they had access to funding for a hiring bonus for state-funded preschools. And so we decided to work together with them and offer one application to reduce confusion as to who's funded in what way. And this is actually expanding our impact. So originally our hiring bonus was just going to be $500 across the board, but because we had that additional funding from HCOE, we were able to offer $1,000 for full-time. And yeah, and there's a lot less confusion for that end user as well. And then this one's been really fun. We just started accepting applications for this a couple of months ago. This is our Facility Improvement Loan Forgiveness Program. So basically we're providing SBA loans of $10,000 to childcare providers. And all payments and interest are covered for the first six months. And then if they submit their, their receipts and show proof that they've completed their project within six months, they'll pay nothing for it. So it's basically a grant. And we've accepted, let's see, we have 43 approved applications right now. Four loans have been fully funded. We have two more that are loaded up and ready to go for this week, hopefully. And one recipient has submitted all of her receipts for forgiveness. So it's moving along at a really healthy pace and that'll be another $400,000 out the door in funding. I think it'll probably be $200,000 this fiscal year and then the rest will be after, just being realistic. And then we also, we have a little bit more money in this coffer and we would like to offer 10 more loans or grants later on this year and really use that to also incentivize those family, friend and neighbor providers going the licensed route. $10,000 can go really far in getting cribs and toys, play equipment, things like that. I guess I did, I did want to talk a little bit about the, the things that people are doing with this loan. A lot of people are focused on outdoor equipment and just improvement to the quality of life for, for the children that they're caring for. And so there's a lot of like outdoor classrooms and things like that going in. And I really look forward to showing you guys some before and after pictures once we start getting those in. And then these are upcoming programs. So we have educational support. We're working now with our accountability team to define exactly what this will cover, but it'll be available to all students seeking a higher education in the field of early childhood education and as, as well as supporting the professionals already in the field seeking additional certification. So improving the quality of care available. And we expect to roll out that program in the next couple of months. We're also working on working family subsidies. So as you know, a lot of families are able to receive subsidized childcare and we're looking for ways to expand the impact of the existing programs and hopefully catch some of the people that are in the gaps. So people who don't quite qualify for subsidies, we would like to give them a hand up because we know that those on the margins are really, really struggling. Another thing that we're working on is a database, a backend database that will support childcare providers in taking role and accepting payments. And it'll help smooth things out on the business end. Changing Tides is working on that. And finally, the next thing that we're launching is a group that we're calling the Childcare Champions. So we're convening a group of Humboldt County business owners, childcare experts and leaders to discuss how we can support this, this work long-term. $5 million is a lot of money, but it's not going to last forever. And so we're working with California Center for Rural Policy to do some large-scale data collection and analysis and hopefully make some data-informed policy advocacy and philanthropic efforts that will continue to support childcare into the future. And yeah, we have a pretty good group of people who've already committed to being on, on our Champions team, people from EDD and Humboldt Area Foundation, Smolin. Yeah, we've got contacts all over the place and we're really trying to have a good team. And yeah, that's what I've got.
Thank you very much. Well, I think if we didn't already know it, I hope people are learning how important childcare is to our families and our economy and, and people being able to work and good care for those children as well. So thank you all for your incredible efforts. Glad we were able to help. And thank you to the federal government for the ARPA funds. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you through the chair. I just appreciate, I know that, you know, the county helped and that you did this program, but I really appreciate the opportunities for the programs. Childcare, when you are having to work and you don't have childcare, there's nothing more of a big stressor than how to, or where your children are going to be. Are they safe? Are they in a good childcare? And it really makes for a stressful household with young children when you have to work both, both members of, most households have two incomes and need that. And so it doesn't allow for one person really to stay home any longer to take care of a child. And so I really appreciate the efforts that, and the program that you put together.
Thank you. And I've got Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, just applaud you for your leadership on this, Susan. I'm just so thrilled to see how all your efforts on this have blossomed. I know it's a huge group of people that are involved, but, but I want to thank you for really using your platform to give it voice. And I just so appreciate the effort you're making in this department and the way that we've been able to collaborate and cheat. I'm so excited that you're involved too. So just wanted to give some kudos.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair Madron. Yeah, I just want to echo the stress that is shared by 80% of the families. And even the 25% that get childcare probably had to go through some stressful place to do that. I know for, for our family, it was always stressful. And then with everyone that we're around, it, that time, I can just remember so vividly. And, and you know, we, we weren't, you know, as stressed as many, many others with relationship to this. It is indicative of this situation with relationship to the, to the, what people are paid. I mean, it's certainly gender-related in terms of what society has thought of this job and as being quote unquote, woman's work. And, and we see that in other sectors as well. And it's reflective in, in sort of the, the income gaps that we see. And I think that we're, we're doing a lot of work, and I know Susan and all of her cohorts are doing a lot of work to change that viewpoint. And in so many sectors, we see things like efforts to really even support industries around like business parks and those sorts of things. And, and we don't really have that sort of level of support with relationship, you know, around this industry and around this as an actual economic sector in and of itself. And we still treat it very diminutively. And I think, I think when we treat it with the respect that it deserves, then we'll see the income and wages that it deserves. And so again, I really appreciate your work on this.
Great, thank you for those comments. And anybody else from the board before we go to public comment? Supervisor Bone.
No, I'm pretty happy with the way we spent this money and seeing how it's being used. I just worry when it runs out, what a lot of them are going to do and things like that. And I understand 100% what Supervisor Wilson's saying about the pay and equity. The problem being is it's still $250 a week for childcare. Or more. I mean, 250 is a bargain. So when you find somebody giving out that amount, they're spending their after-tax money, it's just, how much more can, and you know, can, can happen? I think, you know, supplemental in any way we can like this when it does happen. I'm sitting here looking at three grandkids that all take part in somewhat after-school programs have been a lifesaver, but they all have to take care, they have some sort of childcare. A lot of it's our family, but I mean, you know, but mainly grandmother. But I, it's, it's just so cost prohibitive when you can find it and then you find the other reasons of finding people to fill the positions. So appreciate everything you're doing.
I always think a scary but very vivid way of thinking about it is childcare for one child could be as much as rent. And rent, we already know, is really high, so.
Great, thank you very much. And so we'll take public comment and we'll go to Zoom first as usual. And we have 0151 with their hand up. 0151. And star six, unmute. There you go, welcome.
Thank you. Dottie Russell again, Southern Humboldt. And as a previous licensed large family childcare facility that went on to get a credential in special education and art, I really feel it necessary to address the whole problem. So the whole problem is gigantic. So if somebody has enough money to have a really nice place that can be approved so that then they can get minimum wage or maybe not very much more than that, to have a job taking care of children, doesn't really match. So I think typically a family daycare or childcare facility requires that it's on the site that they, where they live. So there should probably be an adjustment of help to pay for a bigger place for them or a nicer place for them so that they can in fact address that many children. Either we should do that or. I'm sorry, there's some talking in the background, it's a little distracting.
Sorry, Dottie, my apologies, that was me.
It's okay, no problem. Things happen. So I'm just trying to say, how do we set this up so that there's some kind of help with where this childcare facility could be? Or can it be an adjacent piece of property to where they live? I mean, let's talk about this and let's, you know, be on the forefront of making this happen because an example, somebody was taking care of her child, she went to work, she left her two children with, with a care provider, the care provider ended up being, being on some drugs. So her children were taken away from her because the care, she wasn't even with them when this happened. And the children were taken away. She kicked the guy away from her children, never around the children again, but the children were gone and in foster care. So then she was so upset about what happened and trying to keep everybody away from her that had ever been on any drugs. And she had a heart attack. She went to Southern, she went to a place and had an artificial valve put in, went back to Garberville, was let out with still an infection in her heart and she died. And so these kinds of things can't happen. They just can't keep happening. We need to have a team.
30 seconds.
We need to have a resource. Yeah, thank you. Anyway, there has to be a way that people can be in childcare if they can't afford an expensive place to live. So let's work on it and make it happen. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. And we'll go to those in the audience here today. Three minutes, welcome.
For our childcare stabilization fund, I want to thank all taxpayers, all people involved with distributing this most important investment in this future generation. I've recently been gifted with additional education on the importance of early childhood memories and the importance of at all ages, knowing people we can trust. And I'm hopeful that living wage, family wage will be part of this consortium of Humboldt County professionals and beyond that will continue the momentum that was expressed in a very quality way this morning for people who are choosing career paths. We have Boys and Girls Club, we have after-school programs, we have a great reputation of some of the best teachers. And so I'm hoping that as we're considering other places, especially on the weekends, that there'll be more spaces and places for parents and their caregivers to have, for children of all ages to play, to learn. And I'm specifically. And I'm specifically thinking of our Pearson owned properties in McKinleyville, empty spaces and places that could be funded and opened to the public with gratitude to Kelly Garrett, Twyla Sanchez, and the board that provided open doors for, for a significant period of time for now empty spaces and places near our Totem Pole and our legacy barber shop. So thank you supervisors for continuing your creative best and diplomatic best on supporting the excellent people that are representing parents and future parents, employees and future employees in the childcare industry.
Thank you very much. And next, welcome.
So I have a question that you may wish to ask, and I think it's pertinent, and I think probably would be bragging for the skills that Susan and Jade have. So many of these funds are perceived to be administered with extremely high administration costs. You'll see 30, 40, 50% of the money not actually going on there. So that's just a question that I think that they would probably be proud to, to answer as far as that goes. I do want to echo the concern that Supervisor Bone had. These are one-time funding, and when the money's gone, who's going to fill the gap then? So I strongly support these programs, especially where they're investing in long-term infrastructure, like they said, the playgrounds and things. On the other hand, some of the money that's being given out is, is a one-time thing. And what happens afterwards, who's going to come in? They say that these organizations may fill in, and the business people will fill in maybe, but I can't see that happening. The business people locally are not making their returns, they don't have the amount of money to help fill these gaps. So I guess that's left up to, to you folks or something to fill the gaps on those things. A large sum of money, and again, one time, I think it was mentioned, $5 million was given out, and I'm glad that it didn't all go out at once. And to see it metered out is very important. So I do trust the people involved in this process. And as you all know, the children, old people and dogs are what I'm kind of lobbying for all the time. And so anyway, thank you for bringing this forward and having this discussion today.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Board. Mary Ann Hansen, First Five Humboldt. And I just want to make two really quick points. One, I want to express my deep appreciation to AEDC and their leadership and the partnership with the county. It has been fantastic. Susan and her team, Jade and others have just shown amazing sort of foresight and planning in getting this money out quickly to the community because, you know, as you know, this is the childcare stabilization fund, and we were bleeding. The field was really suffering, and I just have been in awe of the work that they've done and the speed with which they've done it. The second thing I want to say is that, and it's anecdotal, but still, I want to be able to share with your board, First Five Humboldt has been doing a series of listening sessions with childcare providers throughout the county. We've done a session in Southern Humboldt, one in Hoopah, one in McKinleyville, one in Fortuna, one in Eureka so far. And universally, folks have, childcare providers have expressed their appreciation for this program. They've talked about how it's helped them pay down the debt they incurred during COVID, how it's helped encourage them to stay in the field when it's felt pretty hopeless, how it's given them just a little bit of resources and a huge shot in the arm to continue to do the really hard work that they do. And so I want to tell you that it's working, it's making a difference and stabilizing the field as far as we can tell so far. So thank you very much for your investment and your commitment to this issue. And then to Kent's point, I just want to say, the team has planned, right? That Childcare Champions Group that Jade talked about is specifically focused on looking at what are the options when this money runs out and what can we do locally in our community so that we can build up childcare as an infrastructure support? So thank you.
Thank you. And next, oh, okay, yep, welcome.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and others. I'm Carrie Vinagis, I'm the Executive Director for Changing Tides Family Services. And those of you who have known us for almost 50 years, a lot of parents come through our doors, and we also support providers. We are one of the partners in this project, and we are extremely grateful for the action that you took because we were the ones who watched from March 2020, the pain that was going on for the families and for our childcare providers. Businesses could not function, our families couldn't function without this essential service, and this has really helped. So a lot of the data that we have has showed that we have stopped hemorrhaging the loss in childcare, and we are rebuilding. So that's part of the data we'll be collecting. And I also want to say that being at a lot of state meetings with very large municipal centers in other counties, I am really, really excited that they are coming to us to ask us what we're doing with this fund, that the Bay Area and Los Angeles have reached out to us to ask about how we're setting up our data tracking, how we've gotten our dollars out the door, how we're monitoring and keeping an eye on things, and how we're supporting providers. That says a lot to me. We know we're wonderful in Humboldt, but a lot of times people forget anything above San Francisco. So it's been really refreshing to know everything that we put into place has such a broader impact. We're actually inspiring other people to do similar things. And I wanted to echo what Mary Ann said too, is that the Childcare Champions is meant for sustainability. That is our goal. We are leveraging every available dollar that comes in, whether it's state funds, the ARPA funds, grants that were secured by HCOE, other funding, and our business education has also launched too. So providers are working with the SBDC, they're working with the Small Business Administration Center to improve their business skills. They now know how to write for loans, they now know how to fill out complete applications. That is a huge advantage because generally speaking, childcare providers are the last ones to receive those kinds of skilled trainings, even though they operate a big chunk of small business in our area. So thank you again, and we look forward to bringing more information back the next time and the next update on this report.
Thank you very much. And next, welcome.
Dawn Arledge, California Center for Rural Policy. I just wanted to thank you all very much for making this investment in what we know is a really important issue in Humboldt. And we are really excited to work with the Childcare Champions and leaders like Carrie and Mary Ann and AEDC to create sustainability for this work because it's so important. And I wanted to echo what Carrie said, that in our work across rural Northern California, other First Fives and groups are asking about this investment, and how did Humboldt do this, and how can we do this? And so I appreciate the leadership and all of the amazing network of people that we have working in this county on this issue. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, looks like that's the end of our public comment. We'll bring it back to the board for consideration of a motion to receive and file the report. So moved.
Second.
We'll go with moved by Supervisor Wilson and seconded by Supervisor Bushnell. And let's do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yep.
Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
And just a great heartfelt thanks to all the care providers out there and all the support folks with these organizations, nonprofits, county, et cetera. Very much appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. And with that, we do have a time set at 10:30, which we can't begin until 10:30. So we're going to try and fit one item in. We have three more items on the agenda, but two of them are probably going to take more than 10 minutes. So I'm going to jump over the tobacco licensing ordinance as well as the sustained finding of violation. And we will be hearing those at 1 o'clock or sometime after 1 o'clock. What we're going to do now is open the, have a presentation by Director Ford on the item I-1, which is a proposal for a street name change from Lake Benbow Drive to Benbow Inn Drive. And we'll open the public hearing at a certain point, but Supervisor Bone, you had a question? I, I understand that, but I've been given feedback from them and the CIO that we're good with that. Appreciate it, thank you. Sorry, we couldn't get right in there. We'll see you at 1 o'clock on the tobacco item. So with that, Director Ford, please.
Thank you Chairman Madron, members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford with Planning and Building. This is a request by John Porter to change the name of Benbow Lake Drive to Benbow Inn Drive. This was accompanied by a petition from the property owners along the current Benbow Lake Drive. Part of the reason for this request is because Benbow Lake no longer exists. In 2000, prior to 2010, it was something that was created and put in place every year. And since 2010, it has not been put into place. In 2016, all the supporting infrastructure was removed. So in order to eliminate that confusion, the request has been made to change the name to Benbow Lake or Lake Benbow Drive. Be happy to show you aerial images if you'd like, but that really is the long and the short of it, there is no opposition to this.
Great. And I assume I should open the public hearing at this point? Would that be correct? And do we need to read anything else into the record?
No, we do not Chairman Drone.
Great, okay, thank you very much Director Ford. And as you said, no opposition to this, another name change, but it sounds very logical. There is no lake.
I would like to make a motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second. So we have a motion to accept and a second, and we'll go to public comment. And there is one person in Zoom, but no hand up at this time. We'll see if there's comment here in the room, and there is. Welcome.
We have five minutes till our time's certain, so I'll burn up three so you don't have to take a break. No, I'm not going to do that. I strongly support this, it totally makes sense. And anything that John does has been a really gem to our, our community regarding his facility down there in Benbow. Anything that would support him in any single way, I strongly support. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Brevity is wonderful, thank you. And seeing no other public comment, we will, I'm sorry, we'll bring it back to the board and Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks, I appreciate this. This name change, I want to say that I've spent a lot of time at Benbow Lake as a, as a young person, including discovering I was the, I was allergic to paper wasps on my 16th birthday at the dam, which was a fun event that ended me, and, and with me in the hospital. I just want to, you know, there is a bit of irony in this because I have memories associated with this that I attach to the name. And I might proclaim that there's erasure of that history by changing the name, and yet here we are doing it. And with, without much fanfare. And, and I just want to put out there that we just had a discussion about this before with another name change and, and other name changes. So yeah, we, we are seeing these things occur, and I think we should just be mindful of our perspectives in this. That's all, thanks.
Supervisor Bushnell.
So I grew up in Benbow as well, visited the lake often, never remembered seeing Benbow Lake Drive. It was always Benbow Inn. I know that John and staff get the questions, where's the lake? How do I get to the lake? This is Benbow Lake Drive. And so I do, while I understand what Mike is saying, I never really associated it with the name of the lane there. I always, you know, when I go to Benbow, I say, oh, I grew up with the lake there, really miss it. So I'm totally in favor of this as we, you know, just all discussed. And I think that as time goes on, sometimes it's appropriate for name changes.
All right, so we've had public comment, and we've had discussion, we have a motion and a second, let's do a roll call vote.
Thank you Chairman Madron, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Supervisor Bone. You're going to say no, come on.
I'm, I'm just so confused about how everything turns so political every time. Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we have three minutes, Kent, you didn't use up your time. We're going to take a three-minute break and come back here very promptly. So we're in recess for a couple of minutes. Get started again, and we're back from recess, and we have a 10:30 time set, and we're pretty close. And that is the 2021 Annual Fire Chiefs Association Service Report. And Supervisor Michelle Bushnell and myself sit on the ad hoc, and we're very pleased to have this presentation here today. Welcome.
Thank you, Dayal Yenia, Humboldt County Fire Chiefs Association, President, Samoa Fire and Peninsula CSD. Just so it's a roundabout of what it takes to, to make a volunteer fire department work. First, I'd like to thank you guys for hearing us today and letting us present the report to you. First, I also would like to thank Sabell and Tanner for their work on the, the report. It was, it's been well done, and, and again, I'd like to make sure I thank everybody, that's a part of it. During, if you notice, it is 2021, we were a little bit late, but we're still here. I'd first like to, to take a minute to have you guys take a look at the memory page. During 2021 and 2022, we weren't allowed to, weren't allowed, we weren't able to honor our fallen firefighters and, and everybody during that time. And Bob Durfee was one, he was with Samoa, Teo Rice with Grisland, Dave Nichols from Ferndale, and Chief Ed Brady from Redway. Roger Coleman from Alder Point, and Kelly the Fire Dog from Humboldt Bay. They will all be missed. In the county for 2021, even though it was the midst of COVID, there was still 13, over 13,000 incidents ran, excluding Humboldt Bay's numbers in there. 60, over 6,700 of them were run by mostly volunteer fire departments. If you look at the incidents response summary, there was over 38,000 hours in incidents, 39,000 in training, 12,000 hours in maintenance, and very low number, 9,000 hours in, in fundraising during that time. I wrote down a bunch of other numbers, but they're just more hours that we put in that that is just not even computed in, in this, this report. I first like to open it up, do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Bone.
Can I interrupt for a second? Do you want me to pull the presentation up? I finally got it loaded. I didn't know if you wanted that or if you just were speaking off of it, okay.
I, yeah, I forgot to bring physical copies.
That's okay, I have it, I can send it to them.
Well, we all have it on our agendas as an attachment.
And it's on the Fire Safety Council website as well.
It's a great report. Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, and the delay is perfectly understandable in the, the way we've survived the last two years. But I, I, I still think that what, 90% of our fire safety is handled by volunteers in the county. And that, that just shows, and that's a nationwide trend pretty much, I think. And what they do, the, it always amazes me the amount of hours, the amount of hours spent training, and how close those get to how much time we actually spend actually having to respond. The other thing is, we've, we've tried to with Measure Z as much as possible, going from making all those department bake sale departments to making you full-fledged and safe firefighting outfits. And I hope we've, the $15 million over the last seven years, eight years has, has been helpful in that. been helpful in that. And we certainly appreciate, as you said, the memory page. I think we all know everybody on there. I know Bob was a big part of your department, Dave, you know, Chief in Ferndale, and then absconded to Fortuna. But there always has to be one life in the party, and that was Dave.
That was it.
But I appreciate the report. I liked the breakdown. I noticed that we are, we are doing some consolidation, I noticed with Red Crest and Scotia, Riadale, which has gone fairly seamlessly. Everybody seems to get along pretty well, and that's probably the hardest hurdle to get over, and I think that has a lot to say about the respective chiefs that they had there. There was a, there was a good way to make that happen. Extremely missed, you know, I think we had a, we, the chiefs that retired, I would love for you to mention the ones like John Broadstock, what a mainstay, you know, and then Lawn, these people, we didn't lose too much with Lawn because his trusty sidekick, Russ, was right there to fill in, and I think Russ is, as we all know, he has a different delivery, but he says what he means and he does what he says, and I appreciate that down there in the O River Valley. So I appreciate all the, the memory page especially because we do lose those guys. But the report's great, and I don't think we can ever, we can sit up here and talk for hours thanking you guys for everything you do, but, but just thanks.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you through the chair. So I want to thank you for the report. I also want to recognize that in Humboldt County rural fire departments, not, most of the volunteer fire departments, even the normal fire department, the paid fire departments, normal, they respond mostly a lot to medical aides, and that's a special person that can do that, especially in your own community where you're responding to a medical aide that sometimes is your friend, your family, your loved one. Almost always, you know that person. And so I live very rurally in my second district, and I have Alder Point Fire is my volunteer fire department in Bridgeville. And when you need them, you need them, and you're never so happy to see those folks. What I want to say to the community listening is support your local fire department, support your fire departments. Fundraising is tough right now. It's been tough for four years. Measure Z monies are down, and the fire departments are very dependent on that. And so, you know, pick a, pick a fire department and support them healthily if you can by either volunteering your time at a fundraiser or with donations. I also want to recognize that along with departments, Cal Fire often responds as right beside, and so they have a great working relationship with non, not the volunteer departments. And I know Kurt, Kurt and I graduated high school together, and we had a big fire in 2014 out in Bloxburg, and I was never so happy to see him. Get his phone number and, you know, call him every single day. What do you, what's going on? What do you think? How's my house looking? Or I was more worried about my timber, but, so I just really appreciate the report, the dedication of all the fire departments and all the volunteers, and want to say thank you.
The hardest one in that is, is not the ones that you respond to, it's the ones you miss because you're out of district or something. Those are the top ones, especially when it's people that you know.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you for that, and echoing what Supervisor Bushnell said, it is so critical, these fire services, I think, you know, people take them for granted, and we really cannot do that. And, you know, when, right now, a lot of people's fire insurance is either being canceled or doubled or tripled, and the thing that helps control those costs is our volunteer fire departments, along with Cal Fire and everybody else. But, you know, if we don't have these resources, the ISO ratings go up, insurance goes up, or it becomes unavailable. And so to spend an extra $100 a year on an assessment fee is a bargain compared to what happens to your insurance if we don't support that. But we also, as I read in the report, every department is struggling with volunteers, trying to get enough volunteers to continue to be able to, you know, person the, the fire engines going out and everything else that needs to happen. And so please, if you can, volunteer in your local fire department, as Supervisor Bushnell said, or donate, or do whatever you can to support that. A lot of people may not realize this, but not just getting this report done and helping the chiefs finish this, but, you know, the work done in Southern Humboldt to help consolidate districts, the work we're doing right now in Northern Humboldt to figure out some solutions in the Trinidad-West Avon area, and this ancient CSA4 contract that we have. Thank you, Cal Fire, for being there for us in the winter with that contract. But there's a lot going on, and a lot of the supportive services to help navigate all that comes from Sabell Emmett, and the county, and Tanner, and folks, and that's coming off the top of the Measure Z allocations. As I understand it, that's one of your first priorities that you guys have been doing, and I thank you as chiefs for, for supporting that, that effort, because I think we all know the departments are all stretched thin, and Sabell and her team have done a great job of trying to provide that support, navigate the changes in this environment and the rest of it. So I very much am looking forward to us as a board figuring out this whole Measure Z complexity and making sure that we can continue in some way or another to support fire services. So again, thank you for being here today, and I see Supervisor Arroyo has her hand up, so I'm going to go to her next, and then Supervisor Wilson, and then back to Bushnell.
Thank you very much, Dale, for the presentation, and the report was really informative. And I realized that this report, you know, you mentioned it was the 2021 report, and I understand that, and so it may not have been on the horizon when this was being developed, but I wondered if you could, excuse me, speak to the integration of folks into the fire services that are, you know, going to be going through the programs that are new to Cal Poly Humboldt. Has there been any, I'm sure there's been discussion and outreach around that, but could you elaborate a little bit on how, you know, potential students are involved, or, you know, how folks might be able to find jobs in the fire sector? I realize that's, you know, not necessarily, once they graduate, they'll likely not be volunteers in fire, but any, any thoughts there?
Fortuna, Somala, and Blue Lake all has residence programs that they have put out, and those are even tough to fill positions right now. It's, I know there's a lot more talk with CR, with their program, and I'm not in the mix of all those conversations, but it's, volunteers are tough everywhere, so.
Great. Thank you. Is that it, Natalie? Supervisor Arroyo?
That's it. I just want to echo the appreciation for, you know, the volunteer fire departments in particular, and also I know it's, you know, for those who are career firefighters in paid positions, that they're, they're somewhat understaffed as well, and so, you know, appreciate them also.
Thank you very much. And we have Supervisor Wilson, and then Supervisor Bushnell next.
I appreciate this report, and also, again, sort of the arc in moving towards consolidation of more of our, of our departments, if not just to lessen sort of the load of a group of folks. But I also want to thank beyond the chiefs and the firefighters themselves, but the family support within those organizations, especially within the volunteers, and even to highlight, every one of these districts is administered, and a lot of that administration is done by family members, often wives and folks that are being supportive of that. And I think that they also deserve, and that recognition, I'm sure they get it from their families, but, you know, just openly, I think that we have a cadre of folks out there that are doing the paperwork and, you know, the not-so-exciting stuff, and I want to thank them for really, you know, keeping that going. It's been, and sometimes it's really hard, and some of the, and it's, and it's not easy. Things change in terms of the, in terms of like the regulations around these paperworks and stuff, and having folks, this sort of ecosystem of people doing that, I just want to really appreciate them too.
No, my wife. She's making these.
Speaking, speaking of support services, right. Thank you.
Make sure you guys have one. Natalie, I have yours. And, but yes, it takes the whole family. My family knows if I'm in a Somala shirt during a family event, then I could be out the door at any time.
Yep. Great. Appreciate that. And Supervisor Bushnell, you had final comments here?
Thank you, yes. I wanted to know if any of them holding the wall up back there would like to say anything, and they all just stand there. And does anybody want to come up and say anything? No? Kurt? No? Kurt?
Oh, here he goes. You got him.
And then also, I want to recognize Sabell and Tanner and John Miller, who put a lot of work into the formations. We just recently, Garberville and Salmon Creek, just Garberville annexed in some, some areas, and Salmon Creek actually became a district, which is very amazing for that little community, but I know that Sabell, John, and Tanner have done tons of work, so I want to appreciate them as well.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the honor to speak, but really, the honor and the recognition needs to go to the volunteers. The only difference between volunteer departments and paid fire departments is that the paid career fire departments get a paycheck. That is the only difference. The training and dedication from our community members, as well as the family members that Supervisor Wilson, you mentioned, that goes largely unrecognized, and I would like to take a moment here to recognize the importance of Measure Z and the work that all of these volunteers put into protecting our communities. There is no complex or large project, emergency response project, that we can handle on our own by a single department. And that social networking and collaboration is what gets us through the tremendous events we have, such as earthquakes, wildfires, and other incidents. So with respect, I greatly appreciate the time to answer Supervisor Arroyo's question regarding the collaboration of educational institutions and fire departments. There is an effort currently going on to encourage College of the Redwoods to obtain accreditation to put on a formal fire academy. That's a long journey to get there, but Dr. Flamer has expressed interest, as well as his staff, and that encouragement needs to continue. Additionally, just this week, Cal Fire entered into a memorandum of understanding with Cal Poly Humboldt to exchange knowledge in forestry and fire sciences, and again, that's another encouragement from, from the fireside to get that next generation of workforce on our departments, both volunteered and paid. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bone, and then Supervisor Arroyo.
And I don't think anything better exemplified the camaraderie and the volunteer-ness and the levels of service that we got than Michelle's earthquakes on December 20th. I mean, I was down in Ferndale by 3:40. They probably had 18 volunteers on site who had already toured the town twice, talked to the police chief, then headed over to Riadale. Michelle called a couple of times, said she's on her way in, got to Riadale. There were already four, three departments there, and I think over the length of the incident down there, still going on, but I mean, the length of the, the base of the incident, I think there was probably no less than eight different departments, nine different departments that came down and did mutual aid. So I, I think when we asked to support your volunteer, and those were both, both sides of the, Humboldt Bay was also there, Arcata came down, all the volunteers everywhere showed up, and Mike, you mentioned the wives, I don't think Sean's wife down there in Riadale, I don't think she ever left, so it was pretty amazing to see that. But seeing this, and then I look at the hours of training, the hard-to-get volunteers, there is so much stuff going on. I was a volunteer for six, seven years here in Eureka, and we would meet twice a week for an hour and then go to the shanty. Those days have changed quite a bit. We financed two training centers, state-of-the-art training centers, because the one thing we want to do is, and the equipment we've tried to provide and are providing, if anything else, it's the one way we can show you, as you do your services, we want you safe, all of us out there, and the past board that has always tried to fund as much as we can. So again, everything's appreciated.
Supervisor Bushnell.
I'm just going to, I want to read off my, go ahead. I know Supervisor Arroyo was next.
Okay, yes. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. Well, I just decided to start coughing, so I wanted to make a couple of suggestions. Well, one is, actually just one suggestion, and then one more comment with respect to the Fire Academy, College of the Redwoods. I think that would be an incredible resource, and I wonder if this board would be interested in bringing back a letter of support for that at a future meeting, just to show, you know, I think there is a real nexus with the county's work and everything we do and supporting that resource in our community. So I would be glad to support bringing that back. And then I also just wanted to acknowledge, I forgot to mention how much I appreciated the life and work of Bob Durfee. I didn't know any of the other folks mentioned. I'm sure they have an incredible legacy as well, but it was a pleasure to get to know Bob and his family a bit, so I just wanted to say how much I appreciated him.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thanks. I just too want to recognize the passing of, in my district, and I knew personally was Ed Brady. He was fire chief in Redway for many years and lived in Redway. I went to school with his children, and they actually just set his headstone this, this weekend at the Garberville Cemetery, his wife and both daughters. And also Roger Coleman was, Roger lived down the road from me in Bloxburg and was instrumental in starting the Alder Point Fire Department. They've struggled for volunteers out there, and Roger just has been a staple in that community along with his family. And then I didn't have, and then Teo, Teo was Grisland, a young, young man that just really was so involved with the fire department, but also with, you know, clearing of brushes and sustainability for firewise, and his passing was quite a shock to most everyone. He was a very young man, and, and so that community is still honoring him and missing him. And then I didn't have the opportunity to work with Dave Nicholson very much. He passed right when I was elected, but he did one thing, said to me was, well, I didn't support you, but I will now. And so, and I really appreciated his honesty and very much look forward to working with him in Fortuna, and definitely have heard tons of stories and how instrumental he was in that fire district area, and so just want to recognize them. And then also, I know, you know, this, I keep kind of going on, but this report is, you know, it's been many years that we haven't had one, and so I just want to read off the fire departments in my district, if I could. Let me get to them. So Alder Point Fire, Grisland, Bridgeville, Carlotta, Fortuna, Fruitland Ridge, Garberville, Miranda, Myers Flat, Palo Verde, Phillipsville, Redway, Riodale, Salmon Creek, Shelter Cove, Sprawl Creek, Telegraph Ridge, Wall Gulch, and Whitehorn. And that's a lot of departments in one district, and so I just really appreciate all of them and wanted to recognize them.
Yeah, thank you very much. Supervisor Bone.
And just one last little thing, and I appreciate Supervisor Arroyo bringing it up. There is a firefighter one academy starting in August at College of the Redwoods that I still think has openings, and you come out of there with a certificate now, and we, and I think they want to, what you're working on is furthering that program, which is, which is great, and I, the more we can further, the better, and as you said, Dr. Flamer, we already have an academy out there, and we already have, you know, so if anybody's interested, there you go.
All right. Thank you very much. And now we're going to go to public comment, and then we'll entertain a motion. So we'll start with those in Zoom, and I have 3350 and star six to unmute. Star six to unmute. Hopefully you're not watching the video. There you go. Welcome.
Hello, this is Sonny Anderson in Petrolia, California. Yeah, I worked with Ed Brady, I think it was 1974, he was captain for Cal Fire. I was a firefighter, hell of a guy, and quite a character, could really tell a story. And yeah, I went to his memorial at the River at the River Lodge. It's heartbreaking, man. Great guy, did so much for CAL FIRE firefighters and volunteer at Redway. He was a pretty incredible man. So he's definitely missed. So another reason I'm calling is because of the fire is the funding. BLM got $10 million of that CAL FIRE money for brush removal. And that money should have gone to the state, the county, the taxpayers that pay for that CAL FIRE money instead of the federal government. BLM's got other funded resources for that brush removal, but they shouldn't have to dig into the CAL FIRE money. That CAL FIRE money could be used for the volunteer fire departments, brush removal along the roads, and even maybe someday we can lobby together and get CAL FIRE to start funding some of the poorest access roads in the county for fire safety, to be able to access people in and out during a major wildfire. That road from top of Willa Ridge down to Bear Creek that goes to Wal Gulch, that's one of the worst roads in the county. And definitely during a major wildfire, that's going to need to be used by the community and fire resources, more than likely. I've never seen a road in such poor shape anywhere. And I don't know anybody on the board that's ever traveled that road, but it's disgusting. It's got a million-dollar bridge that I worked on down at Bear Creek. It's amazing bridge, but the road coming into that and the road going out of it is just a disgusting road to have for any county road. Anyway, that's my input for the day, and I'm going to miss Ed Brady. I think he was a great man. And Petrolia Fire Department is a great fire department. They've done so much. Travis Howell through the years, he saw a lot of tragic accidents and really heartbreaking to see what he had to go through. It's pretty amazing what these guys have to hold up and go with. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, commenter. And we have hand up on 0151. Star six, there you go. Welcome.
So there are a lot of people, this is Dottie Russell. There are a lot of people working and doing great work trying to keep people safe in Southern Humboldt, and we appreciate it. And the Miranda Fire Department and Water Board kind of have a little bit of confusion thing going on about road access down to their well. So there's been a lot of damage in the past. There's been storm damage recently, you know, from the storms. And we personally get involved in trying to maintain some of it without any support from anybody else to do that. And that's not really appropriate. So I'd like to find out, this is probably Michelle particularly, but for the whole board to support it, is to have some means of getting a grant to get this road properly taken care of so that it's not dangerous in case of another flood or a fire. It's really not safe enough for big equipment to come down and protect the well, which supports the entire town of Miranda. So if somebody there that knows more about grants than I do could help the fire department in Miranda, that'd be really great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. And next, we'll go to those here in the audience today. Welcome. Three minutes.
Ken Swawwski, I'd like to thank both Sonny, good to hear from you, Sonny, and Dottie for chiming in. Just so the public out there, if there's anybody listening knows, other than staff in the room, and the fire people there, which are well represented, there are three of us totally in the room, listening and paying attention to what's going on. And we intend to participate. I did want to apologize for the firefighters. It's kind of an I told you so. But you had a Measure O or something, which eliminated the need to review Measure Z funding. As soon as that happened, there's public perception that things just went astray. And I'd like to see Measure Z repealed and replaced, one quarter percent, again, this is to fire, for some to go to fire. And that quarter percent would be split up as it originally was intended and the original dispersion went. So they would not be getting the share of the whole pot, the other quarter to go to roads. But these people would at least get something out of that. So they would be actually getting half of what they originally got during the first process. I also want to apologize that during this process, I never saw it come to fruition where we have full coverage, Humboldt County Fire District. And I did wish to make at this time a mention of a very big flaw the county has in its policy, kind of a thing of the past. But during the permits for the weed business, or cannabis, as you call it, all someone had to do was file an exemption on their acknowledging that there is no coverage. They didn't have to have coverage for these things. And that did not protect the neighbors, did not protect themselves. So this is kind of a fatal flaw in this process that you've had regarding a lot of permits. And there haven't been terrible lot, but someone where they just say, hey, I admit we don't have coverage, and therefore, nothing happens. So I strongly support the fire departments. As you can see, I strongly support their funding being restored as best we can. There's only so much honey in the honey pot, but I think it should be dispersed as originally was intended to and as the voters basically voted for. Measure Z was managed, in my opinion, extremely well for the first couple of years. But again, as soon as it got its no-longer oversight, so that these people, we could represent what these people wanted and make sure that they got their share of the honey pot. So thank you for the opportunity to speak and thanks for what they do. It's a very difficult job. For those of us in Blue Lake, I have apartments out there, which I'm trying to work with the city of Blue Lake for what we can do for them, to provide affordable housing, four-bedroom, two-bath apartment.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you for 30 seconds. The four-bedroom, two-bath apartment, and I have two of them out there in this nature, probably $400 a month. The people who are the volunteer firefighters are more than welcome to participate in this affordable housing for them. I think that's needed. And I encourage anybody else there who can help these people in any way, shape, or form to do so. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and support these wonderful people today.
Thank you for your comments. And we'll bring it back to the board unless, did you have any follow-ups you wanted to make or just?
I did not.
Being available.
I just wanted, again, thank you guys for
Thank you.
setting this time.
And Supervisor Wilson, and then Bushnell.
I just want to make a motion to accept the presentation. And thank you, Dale.
And I'll second that and just speak to both the paid and volunteer firefighters in my district who are really working very hard to create not just the human infrastructure, but the physical infrastructure and speak to that too. And in terms of all the efforts made around updating not just equipment, but where the equipment is stored and where people are trained. Just a moment on Dal Rice, because I knew him as a very young person up Prairie Meadow Road many, many years ago, and he was a very small person. And I wasn't much bigger at that time. But that, the loss with relationship to that community around Dal, but I want to speak to sort of the advancement of him and other folks around prescribed burn and sort of the new generation of firefighters coming up and really looking at firefighting and land use management from a kind of a newer, although rooted in very, in very long-term and historical land use patterns, is great. And it's wonderful to see both the wisdom of the generations that have been doing it and then sort of the newer folks bringing in new ideas, again, rooted in very old concepts with relationship to prescribed fire. It's just great. And I see that reflected across these, all these institutions. And I just want to thank you guys for the continued evolution and advancement in all of these areas. So thanks.
Thank you for that. And we have a motion and a second. So we'll go to a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
And Supervisor Midron.
Yes, and thank you so much, all of you. All right. And with that, we are going to adjourn for closed session, and we'll have CIO Hayes read into the record what this is for. And then after the closed session, we will take a lunch break, and we will be back here at 1 o'clock for the last two agenda items we have today, which is the tobacco ordinance and the code of conduct issue. So CIO Hayes.
Thank you, Chair Midron. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956-9D4 in order to discuss the intention, excuse me, the initiation of litigation in one potential case.
Thank you very much. And we'll take public comment. There is nobody in Zoom, so we'll take the comment here in the room. Welcome.
So if I'm to understand this, this is initiation of litigation. In other words, the county will be suing somebody else. That wasn't totally clear to me. It's always interesting that we don't have a little more details when we are litigating, but I guess that's the way the game is played. It's always vague, and I'm kind of making an assumption. If I wasn't making an assumption regarding that, frequently is somebody suing us. And I would use an example of something, if somebody's suing us, if that is the case, that we want to avoid being in the position you are with your litigation coming from, I believe it's an ex-employee by the name of Childs from your county council's office. Such things as this, when you go before something like this, I believe in that case, if this is something like that or related, the claim is for $1.4 million. I would jump on that in a heartbeat. The county has a systemic problem with ending up in litigation on these same kind of things. And when you have a systemic problem, frequently the judge will go ahead, and that be shown, will go ahead and do punitive damages, something like $5 to $10 million. Highly recommend you take that into consideration, whether you're initiating litigation or you're involved in it, to minimize your costs. And it's very important out here, your risk management seems to be extremely flawed. Your lack of staff on your county council's office is no longer what it was when Jeffrey Blank was there. And I see the county spending all kinds of money on outside counsel that I think that should be able to be handled within-house. But of course, the county has the same problem with attorneys, whether it's to file litigation or to defend litigation, is that it's just about impossible for qualified people to be brought into our system. And for those of us who are, those of them who are here and doing that kind of job, I greatly appreciate you putting up with the situation in Humboldt County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on your closed session item today. Best of luck. And if you are going to file litigation, I guess that will be reported out and also reported out which attorney would be filing that in the topic when you report out. And the question being, will that report out come when we get back from 1 o'clock, or will that be later in the day?
It'll be at 1 o'clock. Thank you very much. And with that, we are in recess until 1 o'clock. Well, welcome to our afternoon session of the Board of Supervisors for May 23rd, and we are back in session. And first of all, we'll have a report out from CIO Hayes on our closed session item.
Thank you, Chair Midron. The board unanimously approved the initiation of litigation in regards to the matter heard this afternoon. The particular shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless an exception in Government Code 54957-1A2 applies.
Okay. And that's it? Great. Thank you. All right. With that, we have two items left on our agenda. We're going to start out with considering the support, I'm sorry, excuse me. We're going to start out with item two, which is the introduction of a comprehensive tobacco retailer licensing ordinance, adding Chapter Seven to Title Eight, Division One of the county code. And four-fifths vote are required for this item. And welcome. And of course, there's a little button on the stick that gives you a green light.
Okay, well, good afternoon. I'm Sophia Prera, Public Health Director for Department of Health and Human Services. We'll just do a quick round of introductions of the team.
Good afternoon. My name is Mario Kalson. I'm Director of Environmental Health under Public Health Branch.
Good afternoon. My name's Elaine Hogan. I'm a Program Services Coordinator in the Healthy Communities Division of Public Health.
Great. Well, thank you so much for this opportunity to present this ordinance to your board today. While the presentation's getting pulled up, thank you, Nikki. I did just want to say before we begin, I do think it's important that we acknowledge that tobacco does have sacred use in our indigenous communities. And therefore, the tobacco products that we will be discussing today are commercial tobacco products in particular. Thank you. Okay. So why are we talking about a tobacco retail licensing ordinance? The primary goals of a TRL, I'll use that acronym, just since it's a little bit of much to say. The purpose of a retail, a tobacco retail licensing ordinance is to reduce the availability of tobacco for youth in the community and enforce local, state, and federal tobacco laws. Tobacco use, as you may know, is the number one cause of preventable death in California. 219 cities and counties have passed TRL ordinances to stop youth from using tobacco. And despite the passage of SB 793 in 2022 to ban the sales of flavored tobacco products and laws prohibiting the sale of tobacco products to youth, there is no enforcement structure or long-term funding to regulate tobacco retailers. In a recent survey of 12 stores, retailers were observed between February to May of 2023 throughout unincorporated Humboldt County. The products observed included menthol cigarettes, flavored cigarillos, vaping products including e-liquid and vapes, flavored nicotine pouches, and flavored chew. At this time, we're not going to discuss the specific retailers that we visited. However, we can say that we visited retailers in the north, south, and east parts of the county. One way to reduce the availability of tobacco for youth is by putting limitations on where tobacco can be sold and the density of tobacco retailers allowed within a certain radius. Rural counties on the North Coast are seeing youth as young as second grade being caught vaping. A school youth coordinator, for example, spoke with our Tobacco-Free Humboldt team about the fact that they have multiple youth who are 12 or younger who need help quitting vaping nicotine products. And the statewide cessation quit line has an age limit of 13 years or older that they will speak with. We also recognize that your board has also a substantial interest in protecting youth and underserved populations from the harms of tobacco use. So just wanted to share a little bit of data about what's happening locally. So 34% is the first number. So in Humboldt County, tobacco smoking causes or contributes to 30% of all deaths. 25% of Humboldt County ninth graders have used, at some point or another, used vape products. 67% of Humboldt 11th graders report it is fairly or very easy to obtain vape, also known as e-cigarette products. And I believe that's from our California Healthy Kids Survey that we got those last two data points from. So just a little bit about tobacco retailers in unincorporated Humboldt. There are 60 of these retailers, which were surveyed in 2022 by Tobacco-Free Humboldt staff. And we found that these retailers do have multiple revenue sources. 98% sold non-menthol products, meaning that the retailers affected by this ordinance wouldn't lose all of their tobacco product profit, since those cigarettes are still legal under law. Additionally, we found that 98% of retailers sold healthy beverages, 94% of them sold snacks, and 87% of them sold ice cream, 85% of the stores sold toiletries, and 63% sold automotive supplies as well. And through our program's retailer education, Tobacco-Free Humboldt can connect retailers to local Small Business Development Center and the Women's Business Center at Jedi to gain additional support transitioning away from tobacco products that are covered under this ordinance and state law. As you know, it is illegal to sell tobacco products to anyone that's under the age of 21. This law applies to the sale of tobacco products, electronic smoking devices, and tobacco product paraphernalia. As of December 2019, there is no longer an exemption in the law for sales to military personnel that are under the age of 21 as well. Underage youth purchase surveys were completed throughout the county, from north to south, Oric through Garberville. The surveys were led by Tobacco-Free North Coast and Hasby Projects funded by the California Tobacco Control Project. We found that 54%, excuse me, we found that 54% of retailers surveyed in unincorporated Humboldt sold to individuals under 21. We also have some examples from other city jurisdictions as well, seeing that this is an issue in our community. And I'm going to turn it over to Elaine to talk a bit more about what we're proposing.
Yeah, thanks, Sophia. So last time you all heard from us was in August, and we received great feedback from your board. and we received great feedback from your board and really started collaborating between various divisions of public health, environmental health, and healthy communities primarily. And we also engaged retailers. So we sent a letter to all of the 60 retailers in unincorporated areas, kind of outlining the draft provisions that you'll see in the ordinance and asking for their feedback. And so out of the 60 letters we sent, we did receive four survey responses, and we're able to reach out to those retailers and address some of their concerns. And you'll see in the ordinance that we've addressed some of their concerns, primarily the phase-out feature, where no new tobacco retailers would be allowed within 500 feet of schools and youth-oriented facilities. But all existing retailers who meet the basic requirements would be granted a license. And that was in response to the concerns we heard both from your board and from the retailers that we surveyed in unincorporated areas. We've also reached out to all the incorporated cities in the county to let them know about our plans with the ordinance and to present it to your board. And that was in an effort to really foster regional collaboration. That was another piece of feedback that we heard from your board, that we should kind of all be on the same page countywide. So there's not like an unfair advantage to businesses in county unincorporated versus in city jurisdictions. We also have done some just informal store surveys since the passage of SB 793, just to kind of see what products are being sold locally. And as Sophia mentioned, we are still seeing products that are banned under state law being sold here locally. So we know that there is a need for this local enforcement structure.
Elaine, a quick clarification, excuse me.
And that came in December 21st, right?
Correct. Yes, correct.
What's it, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, because I know when they were talking about, they were going to let the retailers sell their existing product out? They weren't going to make them just throw it out and take a total loss? So I thought they were going to be able to sell their product out. Was that, am I wrong?
So that did happen, but my understanding is that that window was kind of after the election, when we knew that it was going to be ratified, until December 21st, was, is my understanding of how that worked.
Great, thank you.
And we did receive some calls from retailers, and that is what we advised them, that December 21st was the effective date, and at that point, they needed to have things gone.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So just to go over a little bit of the basic provisions of the ordinance that you all have in your packets. We would be requiring a tobacco retail license for any retailer that wants to sell tobacco. They'd be valid for a year. And this does solidify that flavored tobacco sales would be prohibited. So reinforces existing state law. Additionally, pharmacies, mobile vending, cannabis businesses would not be allowed licenses. And that's, the cannabis part is under state law. So we would be consistent with state law. And really, the transferability is another piece. There would be a limited transferability of licenses to family members. And that's really a way to overall, over time, reduce the overall amount of licenses. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mario from Environmental Health.
Thanks, Elaine. DEH plans to handle the licensing review and management needs and enforcement response described in the ordinance. The DEH team has experience in oversight of regulated materials and is committed to a variety of disease prevention efforts. With our permit management capacity, professionally trained staff, and regulatory overlap in oversight of accumulations of nicotine concentrate, which is classified as hazardous waste materials, DEH involvement makes sense. Implementation of the ordinance would involve educational outreach efforts for operators and a 90-day window for existing retailers to obtain a license and avoid some geographical restrictions applicable to new applicants. Existing retailers may receive a license with a timely application submittal and operations which are compliant with the ordinance. The program would be funded by application and renewal fees, for which we'll return to your board for approval, and supplemented by state and federal grants. As stated, DEH will initially work in conjunction with Tobacco-Free Humboldt of Healthy Communities Division to educate and inform retailers about violations found and how to remedy them. Long-term enforcement will echo existing DEH programs. Monitoring will include unannounced inspections in response to complaints received by DEH and random assessments that may, in some cases, involve collaborations with law enforcement. Any observed violations are noted on a report, which is provided to the operator at the conclusion of each inspection. And observed violations the ordinance proposes shall be corrected within 14 days to avoid enforcement penalties. Consequences escalate in the ordinance, as written, and include suspension, revocation, and penalties in some scenarios. If the license is suspended or revoked, the operator must remove all tobacco products, advertisements, and distribution promotions from public view. A notice of decision is provided to the operator and would include details on the process if they'd like to file a request for review or an appeal. A suspension occurs if an operator violates requirements, conditions, or prohibitions of the ordinance, provided false or misleading information on the application or has been convicted of a crime related to state, federal, or local tobacco law. Suspensions escalate in duration for repeat offenses from 60 to 180 days and ultimately to a five-year revocation. The retailer may agree to a stipulated fine in lieu of penalties and/or a hearing for the first or second violations.
So in closing, I, first of all, just want to really express my gratitude for the work that Elaine and Mario and their teams have done to pull this ordinance together. There's a lot of groundwork that comes to develop a new program like this. And also really want to appreciate county council's support in the development of this ordinance and also our community partners that have done some of this public engagement work as well around a TRL, both in jurisdictions and with retailers. And I did just want to note for your board that in the staff report, under recommendations, a second recommendation says to set the ordinance for adoption on July 1st, 2023. And I believe we would want to update that to July 11th, which is a day of a board meeting, if that's acceptable to all parties involved. But at this point, we would welcome any questions or input you have on this. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We'll go to board comments, questions, Supervisor Bone.
Do we have, and let me, I don't think you put the fee schedule up there. Are we basically just trying to price people out of doing business of selling? And I'm not in favor of cigarettes, never smoked, because I had asthma, so I never smoked cigarettes. So I was kind of self-inflicted on it. Smoked cigars, but sorry. It sounds like what we're doing here, and I just, I saw a picture of a, and this sounds crass maybe, that's what I do best. We showed a picture of a vape cartridge, and I'm wondering how many needles were next to that and fentanyl and everything else. It just seems, who, the wholesaler is the one that is delivering to these guys, right? Oh, I don't know who it is anymore. It used to be all be a buck, and most of the stores got it from Costco, but I don't know if Costco still has cigarettes or not. I know they've been canceling them out. But you can buy all of this stuff online, which is what everybody, it's all readily available online. So I'm concerned that if we're going to put something that's going to charge, I mean, the fees are like 600 a year, or 500, $500, $600 a year, and then $127 an hour if we exceed whatever hours it takes to do what we're doing. And most of these, a lot of these are small business, very small business owners, and not corporate-owned. I'm just concerned that only four people responded out of 60, but we were able to go to 13, and we did some informal surveys, we did everything else. And I think it's something, if we're going to tell these guys, you're going to have to pay $600 a year if you want to sell. It seems like we should probably have a more targeted attack that says we're going to change the way you do business completely and what we're going to expect of you. And I agree, holding them now that they've gone from 18 to 21. You know, they, we pay, I think they pay, was it 15 cents a cigarette or $3 a pack for taxes now? And then for the other products, the vape, any of the other products, it's 54% of the wholesale price. So the one, the one thing I can never figure out, the one slide you had up there, that 34% of all deaths are related to smoking, was that, right?
In Humboldt County, yeah. That there's a cause or relation to tobacco.
That almost sounds like something should be banned completely, but we make too much money off the taxes, so we can't get it banned. But it should be banned completely. Because I guarantee you, if I was selling something and 35% of the people that used it died, or you were selling something, or we were providing something that 35% of the people died when they used it, we wouldn't be selling it anymore. So with that, I just, how many people do we expect for this program to be needed? I saw $55,000 or something for the whole program. That seems pretty light to do as much. So how much is this going to cost? How many people are we going, we have a hiring freeze now. Are we going to be able to even fulfill the positions to do this? And are there no federal and state funds that used to put up the billboards, the anti-smoking billboards and everything that can do this? I'm just, the small businessman is taking it on the chin right now. I don't know if, you know, sales tax dollars are down, I think our bud, you know, and everything else. And I'm not saying we should sell a very bad product. I'm not, I'm not, I'm taking the product out of it. It just, we're not going to sell bunny plushies or something like that. The small business person, is there a way to set this up? So we, and it's probably the small businessman we have the problem with. I don't know. Since we don't have any Walmarts or anything in Ferndale, so I'll just take that, so. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just saying, we're taxing an industry that is already hurting, so. I'm concerned, and then how much it's going to cost us to actually do this program.
No, I appreciate your questions around that. And if it's all right with you, I'm just going to reference a little bit this fee scheduled. So just for the public's benefit, this will come to a future public hearing if the board were to proceed with passing this ordinance. So I know there will be more opportunity to discuss this in more detail, but I did want to share a little bit of the thinking of how we developed these rates that are in front of you. So the rate of 127, and that's for the initial like application review. So for a new license, that would just be a one-time fee for that individual business. And then the 381 would be the annual permit fee. So there would be that upfront cost of about over $500. And then from there on out, it would be that 381. But I just want to talk a little bit about how we came up with those numbers. So those numbers are actually modeled off of one of our other programs in environmental health, our COOPA program. So it's modeled off of that fee structure. But if we were to actually look at the cost of this program for the staff time that goes into it, and I believe it's .3 of FTE of an environmental health technician is what, is the staff time that would be for this program for implementing it, doing the inspections and the enforcement. So it wouldn't be a full staff person. We also have staff that are funded in healthy communities to support the retailer education work, doing the compliance checks as well. So we have the grant funding for that. But in terms of the enforcement piece, it would be .3 FTE of an environmental health technician. When we actually calculate the cost of the environmental health technician doing inspections for about 60 retailers in unincorporated Humboldt, that would actually bring the cost of an initial application fee, application review fee to $225, and the annual permit fee to about $675. Given that this is a new program, and we heard your board's concerns about impacts to small businesses, we decided to propose this fee that's modeled off of our other programs. Given this is a new program, we don't know if other city jurisdictions would want to add on, and that could potentially reduce the cost to retailers across the board. And so what we were proposing was this fee structure of the 127 and the 381, which would be less of a burden on our small businesses. And we do have, in the near term, funding from our future of public health, which we would put in about $20,000 to make the difference as we're launching this program. So definitely hear your concerns about the impact to small businesses. I do feel like our team did keep that in mind as we were developing the staffing structure around this and trying to factor in that there is the potential of other city jurisdictions choose to adopt an ordinance and contract that's aligned with the counties and contract with environmental health, that would increase the number of entities that could be under this program and therefore could reduce the cost across the board. But we wanted to be prudent in what we were bringing forward to the board because of those very concerns that were raised. So I appreciate that, what you're raising.
And then, are we, is there a wholesaler fee in here? I mean, we're going to, the guy that's actually taking it to the stores? I mean, there's a wholesaler out there somewhere. Are we charging him a fee? Because that's where it starts. And then if you can get him to make sure, the fine of making sure that he is not delivering flavored tobacco products or cigarettes, then that will cut off the supply. And I don't know, I don't know who the, I don't know who the wholesalers are anymore that do that. I'm so far out of it, so.
No, it's a good question. I'm wondering, Elaine, could you talk a little bit about retailer education and some of the work that's been proposed around that? Because I think that'll help too, in terms of what you're talking about, the transition away from tobacco. I just want to give Elaine an opportunity to talk a little bit about that.
Sure, yeah. So we have funding from the Department of Public Health, that is state standard agreement funding that funds our staff time. So we're not looking at any new positions. And additionally, we have a Department of Justice grant to really help launch this program in terms of the retailer education and public outreach campaigns. And that's all with existing staff that's covered by grant funding. And so, you know, through our connections with these statewide groups, you know, like Sophia mentioned, there are 200 and some odd jurisdictions throughout the state that have already done this. And we're really well-connected and have been for the last couple of years, kind of following this issue, getting copies of their retailer education programs, materials. How do they go about the retailer education piece? And so we feel really well-prepared. We definitely have sufficient funding and staff to be visiting retailers multiple times in person to take a look at their stores and give them tips on what they can and can't sell. And we really want to be supportive of them and be the person that they call and say, "Hey, I've got this distributor, you know, they're trying to sell me this product. Is this flavored or not? Can your staff help me?" And that's what we've seen in other jurisdictions across the state, is that public health really becomes a resource for the retailers in terms of helping them understand how to be in compliance with local ordinances and state law. And so we're prepared to do that.
Okay, and I just, on that retailer education, I'm concerned because, like you said, you sent out 60. You got four responses, which is not a pretty good cross-section. But the other thing is, there's nobody here today that knew this was in, and I'm just saying, if we're going to impact somebody's business, whether it's logging, fishing, cannabis, whatever we're doing, we try to get those, we like to get their voices heard. So I mean, everything you're saying is marvelous, and it's great. And if we could get, if we can get kids to quit smoking, that's one of the things they've been doing by raising. The other day, I saw somebody pay $128 for a carton of cigarettes. When I worked in my dad's grocery store, they were 29 cents a pack. So they're getting to them and everything else. But what I'm saying is, we're not going to be able to price everybody out, but I think that point is getting there. So I'm just saying, the retailers need to know if we're going to increase their fees. And before we pass this, I would hope that we'd have that, that opportunity to let those people know, those informal surveys and stuff, says, "Hey, by the way, we're going to charge you, you know, here's a handout," or anything like that. And I don't know if we've done that. So I know the letter went out, but I'm, it doesn't sound like it got read or responded to. So I don't know, do we need to go to them and tell them what we're doing, or just have them accept it as is?
Well, ultimately, it's your board's direction on how you want to proceed with an ordinance and with a fee structure. If the ordinance were to pass, there would obviously be that opportunity before there's the public hearing for the fee, where there could be potentially some targeted outreach just about that fee hearing. That's an opportunity. But it really is at the direction of your board in terms of the sequencing of those events. But we are committed to doing all the retailer education around this.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I've got Supervisor Arroyo, and then Supervisor Bushnell and Wilson in the queue, so Supervisor Arroyo.
Hey, thank you for the presentation, and I didn't have a chance to be part of the board deliberations last year that, you know, preceded this, but I really do appreciate Elaine Hogan taking the time to meet with me and talk through, you know, the, the opportunity to kind of pass something like this, that was coming down the, down the pipe. So, I wondered if you could please share some information, this may have been shared when you deliberated before, about how effective these have been in some, excuse me, some of the other communities where these kinds of ordinances have been passed, and then, if you don't mind sharing, I also have another follow-up question after that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't have the specific data, but we do know in general from our participation in all of the statewide groups that we're a part of, that they do see a reduction in youth use after passing policies like this. You know, California has a long history of tobacco control that has gradually reduced our smoking rate. What we're seeing now with the youth vaping rate is just sort of, you know, the next phase that we're trying to tackle through policy. And so, I don't have the specific numbers, I'm happy to get back to your board with those, because we do have data from, throughout the state that does show a reduction in youth use.
Great, thank you. And your final question?
It's okay, I am, I actually feel like I, I just saw it in one of the documents that was attached, so never mind.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, thank you through, through the chair. So, I know that I was one of the supervisors that asked about small businesses, and so I thank you for the, some of the changes that you took into consideration. I have a couple of questions though with the, so currently, for a tobacco license, what, what is the difference with the new fee schedule compared to the old? Do you have that? Or is there anything, is there any fee associated now?
Currently, there, there is no local tobacco retail licensing fee, so this would be creating that enforcement structure for, for those, for the local ordinance and for state and federal laws as well.
So, where does this money go, these, that we collect?
So, the, the money for, the, the fees for this program would go to fund the .3 FTE of the environmental health technician.
Okay, and then, current, thank you for that. And then currently, for a tobacco license in Humboldt, there is one, right? Or not? There's no, so it's just a retail license and you get to sell tobacco?
And can you speak to maybe the state requirements? Thank you.
Yeah, so currently, without a local TRL, the only fee that retailers pay is to the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and it's about $275 a year, and their primary concern is with counterfeit products, so they make sure that, you know, it's an official tobacco product with the stamp and seal on it, and that is their primary concern. And so retailers that would receive a local TRL would have to have that license, that would be something that we check during our inspections to make sure they're in compliance with that state license.
And so you had said, thank you, you had said that there was $20,000 to help with the transition of this, can you elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so there's the funding from the Department of Justice grant that Elaine was talking about that funds some of our tobacco-free Humboldt staff to support the implementation of this, do the retailer education work. And then there's the, the fees that will come to your board at, at a future date if this is, if this is passed, for you to review and approve a, a fee structure for the program. And if we were to model it after one of our existing programs, it, which is the 127 and the 381, for example, the 127 for the new application fee, the 381 for the annual permit fee, and then there's the, you know, per hour cost 127 beyond that. But basically, that fee would not cover the cost of the staff time to do this work. And so, in recognition of the board's concern around costs to our local businesses, we have some funding through our future of public health funding to put in about $20,000 to help launch this program, because we wanted to be mindful of those costs. So, that's basically artificially lowers the, the cost of the program for the retailers in making that choice, so.
Which would be these, it would still be this fee structure, but because of that money, this is where the fee structure came?
Yeah, so other, yeah, yeah, no, thank, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So, if it, we did not put in outside funds of, you know, future public health funding into this for about the $20,000, then the cost would be, for the application review, $225, and then for the annual permit fee, it would be about $675. So, a starting cost for this program then, for a business, would be about $900 versus the about $500.
So, and, so this is an annual, you have to renew this license every year?
Yes.
Do you anticipate then, that 381, which you said normally would be 600 something, your $20,000 is going to burn up pretty quick, so then does that number go up?
Well, so, the reason why also we were trying to be prudent with the estimations is because we are hearing that there may be other local jurisdictions that would want to adopt a similar TRL ordinance that aligns with the counties. And if they were to do that and contract with, with our Division of Environmental Health to do the inspection and enforcement work, then that would increase the number of retailers and therefore lower the cost per retailer. And so, that's also the, the consideration in this as well with the fee, is that I think we wanted to be prudent in what we were proposing, because if we start off with 60 retailers, but then a year or two in, we end up having more, then those that were the very initial ones could have hypothetically paid more for the upfront cost of the development of the program, even though over time, the, the fee might level out with the, with additional retailers being added in. So, those are just some of the considerations around what's proposed for the fee. And so, and if, if it's beneficial to your board at all for us to bring both options to consider and for, for the public hearing, to see those, the true cost versus with us supplementing, we're, we're happy to do that as well.
Well, I'm just, you know, we're, we're asking retailers that have been carrying tobacco, and I'm not a smoker, I don't like smoking, I'm not for it at all, it's not, I don't like being around it, but then also, I am, you know, I do support my local small businesses and that right. We're requiring them to do, they've been carrying that product for a long time, we're requiring them to now get on board with us and pay more money, but we're requiring them to pay a new processing fee that they're not asking for at all. We're saying you have to do this and pay your annual, the 381, which is your annual permit fee, to support this, this ordinance, which I understand the ordinance around youth, and I do appreciate that. But I'm not sure I agree that they should have to pay to do something they don't even want to do, when they've been selling tobacco for, you know, however long. And then the second, so that's just a statement I'm going to make, and then this other part of some of my questions was, have you asked, because this is unincorporated Humboldt, so this, rest of the cities don't have to fall in line, but have you, have you spoken with any of them? Fortuna, Riedel, Eureka, Ferndale, and what has been your, their, the feedback?
Yeah, so we did send out a, a letter to all the city managers around the TRL, and just basically gave a summary of, you know, here are the provisions that we're looking at, similar to the, the retailer outreach. I know we did hear, I know we heard back from at least one city manager, I did, so I'll say, we didn't hear any negative feedback.
I mean, don't you think that it would be better if we did this ordinance, you know, in line with the cities as well, so then all of Humboldt? Because, you know, you're going to do unincorporate Heightsville, and they're going to drive to Fortuna, so I just, I don't, I had hoped maybe that work would be done so that, that this ordinance could be then just aligned with everyone if they were interested? And I'm just, so I'm wondering if you, like, sent the letter, but did you call, did you ask, did you say you guys interested? Can, can you get on board with us? Was that work done?
Yeah, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, with our community partners, we've presented at almost all of the city councils in incorporated, incorporated cities in the county, so Trinidad, Riedel, Eureka, and Blue Lake. And our community partners, I think, will speak more possibly during public comment, but they've also been in touch with the City of Arcata and Fortuna, and are looking to get on a future city council agenda to present the idea. And the feedback we heard from those presentations at those city councils was like, "Great, let's wait and see what the county does." Like, we didn't really get any, we didn't really get much feedback, other than, "Thanks for the presentation, and we'll wait and see what the county does," and we're on board. So, we have preliminarily positive feedback and did not receive any additional comments.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is around the transferable of the license, is, can you pull that slide up? Yes. So, it says a tobacco license may not be transferred from one person to another or from one location, but then there was something about, can it be transferred to a, a child or parent?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's on the slide.
That's the one I'm looking for.
Yes, there we go, there's, yeah, so it, it is transferable to a parent, child, spouse, or domestic partner.
Okay. So, if, if a business was to sell, say, I'll reference the Miranda Market in Miranda, that there's one store in that town, and it is within 500 feet of a school. If that business was to sell, then there, that, they would not be able to transfer that license to a new owner, is that correct? So then, no store in that community would be, go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 finish your question, I want to make sure I'm answering your question, I'm sorry.
So, just no, no store in that, or no retail area in that little town then would be able to have tobacco, or what does that look like?
It, it would be the tobacco that would be covered under the, the ordinance, so flavored tobacco wouldn't be transferable, but non-flavored tobacco products would still be allowed under that, that, under that business.
Could be, then that, could be, then they could still sell, like, regular tobacco?
Oh, forgive me, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, they wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got mixed up there for a second, so.
Flavored tobacco can't be sold in the state of California, right? With the new ordinance?
Yeah.
So, we're not talking about flavored tobacco, because the state already took care of that. We're talking about regular tobacco, right?
Well, the transferability of the license, that, that would not be able to happen, but for any existing retailer that has a license, they would be able to sell non-flavored tobacco under the license.
But if they sold their business, they would not be able to sell that license with that business?
Yes.
And then, then it could not, they could not get a new license, apply for a new license, because it's within the 500 feet?
Yes.
Is there any exemption process? Like, if there's only one store in one town, and it just happens to fall within 500 feet of a school? Is there any consideration to an exemption?
I think that really is at the direction of your board. If, if there are any provisions that you would like to change, I think that's, that's really up to your, your board to give us that, that feedback on.
Well, I mean, I don't, you know, cigarette smoking is not something, like I said, but neither is driving 20 miles to get a pack of cigarettes and driving back, because it's the only store in town. So, you know, we're trying to beat greenhouse gases as well, now we're adding more driving because we're going to say no, in this one little town that has one little store that's actually pretty big. So, I'm just thinking out loud.
I appreciate, yeah, thank you.
And thank you, and I have in the queue Supervisor Wilson, and then Supervisor Arroyo.
Yeah, I appreciate this, and I appreciate the, you know, the initial efforts in Supervisor Bone and myself, having, you know, the initial conversations with relationship to getting this started, and this was sort of before the state was, had taken, taken this on. So, I want to speak to a couple of issues that were brought up. One is the idea around the county versus the other jurisdictions. The county is the public health department for the county, and the cities rely on us as leaders in that realm with relationship to these issues, as well as inspections around and, and regulation around restaurants, and a host of other things that are within our city jurisdictions. And so, we actually provide that leadership role for our jurisdictions, and so I think it is pertinent and relevant for us to take the first step and to be leaders, and in, in moving towards really getting these products out of our kids' hands and environments, and I, and as a father of a teenager and a previous teenager, I can attest that, that the reports back are that these products are readily available to, to kids, and that, and the use is widespread. I, I, I do think that regulation in relationship to tobacco has been very successful in terms of, in terms of health. We saw that when we removed tobacco, there were cigarette smoking from bars and restaurants, and, and in the workplace, and it really dramatically reduced, reduced the use of these products, and had, and had public health, positive public health impacts. So, I think it's important that we maintain that that really is our goal. That's the ultimate, that's what we're trying to do here, is to reduce the use of these products, you know, in, in the addictive forms that they are, and we reference the ceremonial uses with relationships to, to, you know, to our tribal nations and, and other folks, and that's not what this is about. I, I do think that, you know, our retailers are already regulated and charge fees with relationship to alcohol, gasoline, and many other things as well, and I think that that, that those help to regulate those, those, both the, the management of those with relationship, but also sort of mitigating for a lot of those impacts that, that we have. So, I think that this, the ordinance as written did the job that our board asked you to do, or our staff to do. I think that if, if we, if there is a need to make some minor modifications to move this forward, then I'm willing to, you know, have some discussion and, and litigate that here, or, and, and so, yeah, I, I'm supportive. I, I do believe that our, our retailers do, do bear some responsibility with relationship to these products. They also derive some economic benefit from the, from the, from the selling of these products. They wouldn't do it if it wasn't profitable. And, and so, I, I, I think that this is a, this is a good compromise. Oftentimes, when I look at these kinds of ordinances, I think if this ordinance was passed 10 years ago, would we be sitting here today talking about its repeal? And I don't think we would. And so, from that perspective, I think that, you know, with all its sort of, you know, it's humans trying to navigate these things, will they be perfect? Will everybody agree on all the details? Probably not, but I think in an overall sense, this ordinance as it's written today, and is potentially amendable in the future, gets us where we need to go.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you, I appreciate the discussion in, in line with what Supervisor Wilson just said regarding the profitability. In preparation for this discussion, I had looked at a couple of reports, and frankly, they were a few years old, so I'm sure there are more sources out there that I'm just not familiar with. But even as of a few, a few years ago, per the Tobacco Policy and Organizing Center in, here in California, more than 99% of convenience stores were selling tobacco products and, and vaping products, and the average profit per store was around $90,000. Now, that may have decreased with some of the programs that have been going on to discourage tobacco use, but, but I, I really am not sure, but even if the profit margin is somewhere, you know, even if But even if the profit margin is somewhere, you know, even if the profitability is somewhere in the realm of $20,000 or $50,000 a year, I imagine, you know, it would be worth it for these businesses to go through the licensing process. And, you know, even if they're seeing a decline, you know, because they're not able to sell flavored products anymore, because those are very popular, and they're, they're, they're popular with youth, but they're also popular with adults. So, you know, even recognizing that there would be a decline in the profitability, it does still seem like, at least from a bit of research, that, that it would be worth it for them to continue to proceed with the licensing. Excuse me. And then, with regard to the, another implication that I'm sure you talked about before, was, you know, the income that goes to the first five program as a result of Proposition 10, which, you know, sees tobacco tax revenues going to support early childhood development. And, you know, I think we, we know that that will be an impact, and, you know, if we're discouraging sales of certain products, then there, there may be an impact to those funding streams. So, you know, I know that's, that's a little bit hard, hard to grapple with, but I, I personally think it's worth it to still discourage youth from getting hooked on tobacco. And the last thing I wanted to ask was just about, you mentioned not wanting to deter cultural use of tobacco, particularly for tribal communities in, in cultural and ceremonial use. But I don't see that particularly mentioned in the ordinance or outlined. Could you speak to what your thoughts were about, about that matter?
Thank you Supervisor Arroyo. My, my comments in the beginning, I think were just simply to help contextualize that what we're talking about here is not about the traditional use of tobacco, but specifically around commercial tobacco products. So the ordinance that's before your board today doesn't speak to that use of tobacco, and it's specifically about commercial tobacco that is sold in unincorporated county retailers.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments from board members? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I did, on my notes, I did, I want to speak to the comments or the discussion around retailer outreach. I mean, this isn't the first time this has come to our board. We do with relationship to, I mean, we don't necessarily, when we do ordinances around, say, especially when we're having the last few discussions around, say cannabis, we're not sending out notices to all of the cannabis-affected folks. There's, there are retail associations, and, and there are, and I just feel like we, we have been doing the work with relationship to noticing these things properly, and we've had these discussions very publicly. And there's been a lot of time, and we can, and will, and there will be, even if the board approves what's moving forward today, there will be more time to comment on this before ratification, so, thanks.
Okay, and I guess I'll go ahead and weigh in, so you got the full board's thoughts on this. First off, I'll say I want to thank staff for their work in working with the community and with our board on putting this ordinance together. I fully support what's in front of us here. And, you know, 34% of all deaths, I mean, that's a pretty shocking statistic. And as was seen by the, the purchasing sampling that was done, there's, it's pretty easy for youth to get all kinds of tobacco products. So we clearly have a problem. And we're already, you know, the flavored ones are already outlawed, right? So that's already a, a thing. And the only reason these kinds of ordinances come into place is when people aren't being responsible, right? So I would say that it seems to me the data suggests that the retail entities have not been responsible with following the laws and protecting our youth. So, that's what triggers these kinds of things, right? It's not us wanting to run around and regulate everybody, whatever, but I think protecting our youth and our community from these kinds of things is important. So I support this ordinance. Any other board comments before we go to public comment? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, you can, I mean, I support it, but I was raised in a corner grocery store, and I guarantee you, we didn't make $90,000 a year off of cigarettes, but we did sell cigarettes. So I just, it's a big part of their business, and it does, does affect them. I don't know, I imagine, I would love to come back in a year and how many, see how many aren't selling because of the $400. We say it's so low, I'm just saying, are we, if we're, if we're trying to actually get somewhere, are we not scaring them off enough? I, I don't know where we can be. And I'm just, very rarely do we put in a fee, I know we have ordinances, but, but with a fee, that we don't have some dialogue with the people that are going to pay the fee. So I, and it just doesn't seem like we had enough, you know? And guaranteed, you may not get a lot, I don't, I don't know if there's a mini mart association that they belong to in Humboldt County. I imagine there is a national mini mart association or whatever. But I would just, I'd just feel more comfortable knowing that I, you know, and, and a lot of them just, they don't pay attention. Actually, a lot of them are at their stores working day, so I don't think they probably have us on their TV. They don't know what they're missing, but I would just like to see, because right here, we hit 37 stores, we hit another, we had, we hit all these stores, but when we sent a letter out, we got four responses. That would, that would somewhat, maybe they all want, maybe that just, maybe that's just that they want to get charged it, and go ahead, but I'm all for it. I mean, you don't have to group it with kids or anything else. 34% of all people die, I've, I've said this forever and ever, but you can take this to North Carolina and see how it'll fly and stuff like that, because we make so much money off of cigarettes, we'll just keep taxing it. And it's just, it's, it's syntax, syntax at its best.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell.
I'm just wondering, can you, the four comments, what were they, what was the general comments? Yeah?
Yeah, so all of them were in regards to the provision that is not in the ordinance that you see before you, regarding the distance between, from youth-oriented facilities. So the four responses were from Southern Humboldt businesses that were within the 500 feet of schools. And once I reached out to them and explained that that was no longer being considered, they were not, sorry.
But, it, it's considered for new licenses, not, but not for grandfather.
Correct, so that their existing businesses would be allowed to apply for a license, and as long as they met the basic provisions would be granted a license.
And that was the comment that I had made previous, in our previous discussion.
Right.
That you guys accommodated for the current businesses that.
Correct.
Because there are red ways within, everything is within 500 feet of the school in Miranda as well.
Right.
I appreciate you guys making those changes. Once again, I'm supportive of the ordinance, and I am not a cigarette smoker, I don't like it. I just, it's my responsibility to my district.
Great, thank you very much. So at this point, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. And as always, I start with Zoom, and there is nobody in Zoom. So we'll go here to those in the audience today, if you would like to make comment on this issue in front of us, please step forward, and you've got three minutes. Welcome.
Kansawski, no, I'm not in Zoom frequently, I'm the only commenter there. I did wish to say that I, I have a serious problem with the ordinance. And regarding the, you had some questions regarding the tribe, I think the tribe, you have a lot of tribal members in the room at this time, and of course, they should feel free to come up and express their desires, if they think it's important for ceremonies and things of that nature. My major problem with the ordinance is basically you're enabling death. You're enabling this to continue. I strongly support what Rex says, if it's this bad, we should just ban it. And I think that's the direction we should actually go at this time, consider banning it. You say, well, one, one comment was, there's a problem getting the cigarettes if you have to go 20 minutes a store. Another comment was, well, you can get it all online. So, so that probably, that door needs to be shut also. And I, not speaking for the taxpayer league, but Executive Director, it's one tax I would be in favor of personally, if we were to go ahead and tax every packet that was sold on Amazon for $100, and they are responsible for collecting that money, is my understanding, and, and providing that to, to the county. And that would send a message regarding the weed business, you wanted to be the tip of the spear. Maybe we can be the tip of the spear regarding this. I, I said goodbye to a friend up in Trinity County, Steve Fradberg, and when he was passing, he grabbed my hands. So I'm kind of speaking for Steve, because he died from this. And he went from home hospice off to hospice and passed within a couple of days. So it, as a, Mother Nature gives us all kinds of things. It's our responsibility to decide in what to use that's beneficial. This is not beneficial. I don't know if it's a cruel joke, that it's used by people, but it causes suffering. Now, it's wonderful what we've done so far here. Mexico is the opposite. They have no program that eliminates that. The people down there, you know, the families are losing, the people left and right, you know, and it's, you know, my grandfather, cancer, you know, muerto, three days or something. Hear that all the time. And down there, when I clean up out of my, my houses I have down there, there's just, you know, sometimes there's 20 or 30 cigarette butts. So they have nothing going for themselves. That's one of the few things they're not doing right. But I strongly encourage you to go further than this, not enable it to happen, do everything you can to just shut it down. The small businesses have made their profit.
30 seconds.
And they unfortunately have not been responsible, either from Carolina, or whatever, through the whole process, for, for the healthcare costs that we all bear. And it's time that all smoked products, not just this, but anything you smoke, some other products, when they're heated up, actually, some of the things that turn to arsenic. So I'd like to see this basically, via anything on smoking, there's always to get nicotine other ways, and any other thing, any other way. Thank you for opportunity to speak today on this important topic.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Stevens. I am, while I am the Assistant Director for Health and Human Services, I'm here as a community member. I wasn't planning on making public, public comment, but here I am. I'm also a mom of a nine-year-old. I had my first cigarette when I was 16 years old. I did smoke for 16 years. Quickly became addicted, and I bought my cigarettes at the liquor store that was four blocks from my school, my high school. And this is not in Humboldt County. But I just, you know, I tried quitting several times for those 16 years. It is highly, highly addictive, nicotine. And I was also the kid with my sister who tried to get my dad to quit smoking cigarettes, and ripped up his cigarettes, and he'd get mad at us, and we'd do it again and everything, because we knew that it was bad for you. But here I was at 16, started smoking, and couldn't stop. It wasn't until I was in graduate school that I quit at 30 years old, because I just, I hated myself being a smoker. I was, I'd go to the gym, I'd come home and smoke a cigarette, and I'd be like, why am I doing this? This is so horrible, right? And I'm scared to death now, I still have dreams that I wake up and I've smoked a cigarette at a party, or a potluck, or something, and, and, oh my God, I smoked a cigarette, because I know that if I did, it would be all over. I would be right back into it again. So I just, the 16-year-old Michelle, and the mom in me, knows that if we really want to improve health outcomes for Humboldt County residents, and if I really don't want my son to start smoking cigarettes, we need something like a TLR, TLR ordinance. So I just thought I'd share that. I think for those of us out in the world that smoked cigarettes, became addicted, and then quit, we know now what we didn't know then, that we would never have started in the first place. And we have to make it harder for kids to have not as much access, in my opinion. Knowing that it impacts businesses, it's, it's still the right thing to do, because our kids are more important, in my opinion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any others in the audience today that would like to make a comment on this item? Welcome.
Hi, Lisa Olivier. And I'm the, I'm here as the Chair for ASEP, and also just as a mom. And one, a couple of things I'm circulating are just a, a copy of two things that you have received. One is from the 22nd District PTA, and it's from a friend of mine that couldn't be here today. And also, one is from the resolution from Eureka City Schools that was passed a while back. And I know we sent that to the board, but just as a reminder, that we're strongly in support of these sorts of things. I'm the mother of a teenager at one of our local high schools, and, you know, what I see and what I hear, I mean, we had a question at Boy Scouts over the weekend as to whether or not a kid had vape stuff in his backpack. It's everywhere. And these are young kids, and they have access to it. And the California Healthy Kids Survey data is data that we use for the Allies for Substance Use Prevention, to help figure out what things we're going to focus on, not just alcohol or other stuff, but in fact, in our assistance on the cigarette-related and tobacco-related products. And it, the, the data is scary. It's the honest truth from these kids. They're telling you in these surveys what they have had access to, what have they tried, what have they been dared to try, all these things. And, and it would be shocking to a lot of parents if they actually saw what the, the results are in there. And I just want to encourage you to please help us protect our youth. And I, I really, it's a heartfelt plea. I think we can do this. I mean, I'm a lifetime sufferer from secondhand smoke from my father. He smoked forever, didn't quit till I was long out in, in college. And I will forever have exertive asthma and a whole series of other sensitivities to chemicals that I cannot shake. And so I get driven out of restaurants and bars and things like that, from perfumes and all sorts of stuff, because I'm sensitive to the things that came out of the tobacco smoking. So it's set off my whole system. So it's not just cancers and things like that that can come from it, there's all these other health effects. And I just urge you to, you know, they, they're looking for lifelong smokers by going after kids that are under 21, and particularly under 18. Let's help them not end up on that train in the first place, please.
Thank you very much. Any other commenters, please step forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Amber Weir. I'm Project Director for NorCal for Health, a project of the California Health Collaborative. And I just wanted to share with you a little bit of experience as being a partner in community education around tobacco prevention. So our scope, in my scope of work, we have activities that support the tobacco retailer visits. And up, up in Del Norte County, I got to experience that in partnership with their public health. We went out and actually went to every retailer afterwards, we're a little smaller than you all, but, and, and once they passed their tobacco retail license, we showed up with some education, some easy flyers, the ordinance, can we answer any questions? Here are quit smoking kits, just in case. And we had a wonderful response from every single tobacco retailer. We became their communication, right? So, and we took this information, the reason that we did this was when Mendocino County passed their TRL. So we took a note from their book, and they also had a positive response, their public health, with each of their tobacco retailers with this personal outreach and education. So I just wanted to share with you, I heard some concerns around that relationship and the educational piece with tobacco retailers. There's other partners in the area that can help with that and support that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any other commenters? Yes, please step forward. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Jay McCubery, I live in Arcata. I'm Project Director of Tobacco Free North Coast. And there, I just want to correct, this is not the Jay McCubery Show that you're seeing today. Public health has worked so hard to draft this ordinance, it's something that I think we can all be proud of. It's based on a model that the more than 200 communities have worked on, and adopted these policies throughout California. And it really shows responsiveness to the board's concerns, the retailer concerns, and the economic situation in Humboldt County. It also is designed into Humboldt County's existing programs. In addition, NorCal for Health, communities addressing nicotine and my project, have reached out to all of the cities, either through city managers or city staff. We've done several presentations to city councils, as mentioned, and we will continue to do that, to work so that there's parity and consistency for all retailers throughout Humboldt County. So the proposal policy you have today is an outstanding model, and I thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. Yes, please, hang on.
You made a reference to something, what was that? Something show?
Oh, a couple of the letters that you've received from our broader regional coalition mentioned my name specifically, and I just wanted to.
Okay.
Correct any misconception that I'm somehow the, the mover and shaker behind all this.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's a collective and a team effort, for sure.
Totally went over my head, I'm like.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any other folks in the audience today would like to make a public comment? This is your chance. Seeing no movement towards the podium, we'll go ahead and bring this back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, and thank you for all the public comment. And once again, I'm.
And once again, I'm supportive of the ordinance, just, you know, it's my duty to ask questions. So I do have a question around something similar, though. I know that public health is aware of things in our community called whipits, or little things that smoke shops sell for an inhalant. And I've been wanting to look into how to get an ordinance to prevent those from happening. They're currently sold in a lot of smoke shops to kids, and they litter our areas everywhere, and they're very dangerous. And so I don't know, this ordinance is already going forward, but it was suggested that somehow that could maybe be part of an ordinance, but it's really a huge crisis in our communities. And, you know, I, in the Southern Humboldt area, I know several businesses down there that sell them, and I see them coming out in cases. It's not cool at all. And so I really would like to put that thought in your head, and maybe I could have a conversation later with you about it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Wilson? And then Supervisor Arroyo?
I highly encourage you to do that because a lot of this conversation, this came from, you know, some communications from community members some time ago. And I know that this had been brought up before, and the reason I reached out to Supervisor Bone is because I knew he was supportive of these kinds of efforts before I was on the board. And so I was grateful that, you know, we had a couple of board members that were able to help initiate this process. And so I just want to thank, and all we did was kind of initiate. The hard work was really done by the advocacy groups and by our public health staff. And I just want to, like, you know, thank you so much. And I also want to thank you for, you know, I know every once in a while I would ask, hey, where's that ordinance at? And then you guys would explain, oh my God, it's so complicated, this, and then there's that, and I talk to these people and that. I appreciate all that work that you guys did. Sometimes it seems so simple when it just kind of gets to us, and there it is. But I just want to express my sincerest gratitude. And it is, it is sort of in a long line of processes that we do to help improve public health through, you know, ordinance and policy. And to Supervisor Bushnell's request with relationship to that, that, this is, these are the sparks that get us to that betterment. And I want to thank our board for, you know, the hard questions and the, and the back and forth to sort of make it work and fit into this, these spaces. And so, again, a lot of gratitude, and I'm very much hopeful in that this does what it's supposed to do, and I do think it will have an impact, positive impact. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to go, to, to introduce the attached ordinance, the Comprehensive Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance, and all of the provisions as recommended by staff with the minor amendment to having adoption on July 11, 2023.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Wilson and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. Any final discussions? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I, you know, we put a smoking ordinance in 2016. We had another one in 2010. The one in 2016, we weren't the leader. We followed the incorporated cities who already had that smoking ordinance in. I'm just going to make a plea, I'm going to vote for this because it's the right thing. I fully agree 100% and everything else. I would just like, it doesn't seem like much, but these are the, these are the same people that are now paying more money for minimum wage for their employees. They're just getting hit, so it's just, it's going to transfer. But if we could get better, it sounded like we had a lot of retail outlet engagement, we just didn't talk to them. When, you know, because we, with all the, we found out that they had flavored cigarettes, and they were selling underage. But I think if we did a more, when we're going to bill somebody an extra $400 or $500 a year, it'd be great if we told them about it. That's, that's the only thing I would like to see. We talk about transparency, that would be transparency, says, oh, by the way. So, thanks.
And I have Supervisor Arroyo's hand up?
Thank you. Yeah, I had initially had my hand up just to make a motion, but glad to see this moving forward. And, yeah, since everyone's kind of weighing in with their own stories, I will say my first job was at 14 in Florida, where minors can work at 14 with just, very easily, at a drugstore where legally, I wasn't supposed to be selling cigarettes, but the store got busy, and I was, and nobody stopped me. And, and, you know, we'd even sell cigarettes to kids that came in with a note saying it was, you know, from their parents. So, you know, those days, the ease of getting them has to change. I realize that we have many retail establishments that are probably following the rules very well, but, you know, back then it was easy to steal them, easy to buy them, easy to buy them from a kid. And I also had exposure to secondhand smoke all before my, you know, my own older sibling was 18. So it is a real fact of life for so many of us to have been exposed to this and see it as sort of just part of life, and it doesn't have to be that way. And I really look forward to it not being that way for the next generation.
All right. Thank you very much. I think we've ended our deliberation, and we have a motion and a second, so we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Chair Madron. Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
And again, thank you, staff from public health and environmental health, et cetera, for all your hard work. And now we have to go out and educate and follow up, like was said about Del Norte County and other things. So, thank you. Okay, we only have one item left on the agenda, and because the complaint is against myself, I'm going to pass the chair. Roll over to Vice Chair Supervisor Bone.
And since I don't have that handy, you can tell me when Supervisor Arroyo, if somebody wants to talk. Please. So we'll bring this forward. As I shuffle all my paperwork. My call on Zach O'Handon to give a overview, give you how it's going to go. And then I'm going to ask the Trinidad Rancheria, one of their, somebody from there to speak shortly, and then Supervisor Madron has a comment, and then we'll bring it back for board comments, public comments, and then a board action if needed. So.
Good afternoon, board members. Logging in here just in case there's some questions. I'm Zach O'Handon. I'm the Director of Human Resources for the County of Humboldt. So the item you have in front of you, as it states, is a sustained finding of the violation of the Board of Supervisors Code of Conduct. So just for, I'm going to be very brief here, as, as the code really calls for your board to have much of that discussion. So the process essentially is if a complaint is received, myself as the Director of Human Resources, the county administrative officer, and the county council will meet to deliberate and determine if a formal investigation should occur or if some sort of informal resolution can, can be come to. In this case, it was determined that a formal investigation using an external investigator would be done. Let me grab my notes here. And upon a sustained finding, what your board's Code of Conduct calls for is agendizing that finding and discussing that finding. So what you'll find in this item is that there are multiple allegations. However, the finding that is brought before your board is related to Section B9 of the Code of Conduct, and that speaks to a board member explicitly stating their individual opinion. And so that was the finding of the investigator related to the allegations. So I will just get out ahead of this. There has been question of whether this, based on the wording of that section, should this or could this even be agendized? Well, we're here today, so it has been. That is definitely something that your board could discuss. The investigator interpreted that section, and the committee that is, that comes up with whether we're going to do an investigation that involves myself, the county administrative officer, and county council also deliberated a bit on this and determined that the investigator found that those two sentences in that section were separate. However, that's something that your board could discuss and determine whether you wanted to give direction to staff on how we could amend that section to be better effective, if that's something you wanted to discuss. Another piece of this is there's a recording that was used as part of the investigation. That was brought up by the investigator in his report. He did review, he is an attorney, and he reviewed Penal Code Section 632, and I'm not going to read the whole Penal Code section, but essentially it speaks to, was this a confidential communication that required all parties to consent if a recording was going to happen? His determination was that it was not, and that's why the recording could be used as part of his investigation. So with that, unless you have any other questions, you know, there's a lot of stuff connected to this report, a lot of documentation. Again, I'm not going to get into the specifics because really, your Code of Conduct calls for speaking to the sustained finding, which is, you know, there were some comments made by Supervisor Madron, there was a complaint made, and the finding is really less about the comments that were made and the fact that an explicit statement wasn't made, that those weren't the opinions of the entire board. And so that is what I have for you, but I am happy to answer any questions that you
Any members? Any questions? And with that, I don't know who's going to speak for the tribe. And then there's going to be one, just so you know, there's going to be one spokesman from the tribe, and then there's going to be, the other spokesman will come up and public comment, okay?
All right. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name's Gar Summer. I am the Chairman of Trinidad Rancheria. I'm here today, again today, one year later, asking the board to confirm the rights and status of federally recognized tribes. Please refer to the letter, June 7, 2022, that clearly details that all federally recognized tribes have equal status and standings. As you are aware and documented by the investigator, Supervisor Madron, ongoing words were ill-advised to Trinidad Rancheria and all rancherias in Humboldt County, and we believe they were discriminatory. Also, he failed to identify that he was not representing the board in the meeting. We are tired of Madron discriminating against Trinidad Rancheria, putting in our projects and sending the wrong message based on hearsay and lies. We are also asking the board, again, to appoint a representative to our Freeway Access Project Development Team that will represent the board and be fair and unbiased to recommendations and comments. You know, one thing I'd like to say about me, my family, everybody knows my family in Humboldt County. I was raised in Trinidad, and I know a lot of people in Trinidad. So anything you say about my family or Trinidad Rancher, I hear about it. So I just want to let you know that. So, thank you very much.
Robert will do the in-public comment if you, and then Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Bone, first of all, let me say that I want to apologize in public. I did in a letter back in December, but I want to make this as a public statement, that I apologize to the Trinidad Rancheria and anyone else who is offended by my remarks at that, at said meeting. I'm sorry for any hurt my remarks may have caused. I recognize and support that all federally recognized Indian tribes, including the Trinidad Rancheria, possess equal rights and status under the federal and state law. As a board, we have now set up a government-to-government ad hoc committee because we've been getting requests for government-to-government conversations, and the board has appointed Supervisor Bone and myself to this committee. The third-party investigation had one finding that I did not explicitly state, that the individual opinions and positions I offered at the March 29, 2022 meeting did not express the opinion of the entire board. I failed to state that, as required by Section 8.9 of our Code of Conduct. I recognize that as a board member, I should represent the official policies and positions of the entire Board of Supervisors to the best of my ability when designated as delegates for this purpose. When presenting our own individual opinions and positions, we shall explicitly state they do not represent the opinion of the entire board, and I failed to do that in that meeting. So I apologize for that. While no one has been delegated to represent the county on the freeway interchange matter, I attend these meetings as well as multiple other meetings as a duly elected representative of the 5th District. In the future, I will be more attentive to declaring whether I represent the county in those meetings or just my district. So again, I apologize for any offense I might have created, and that's a sincere apology. I've made it a couple of times, and here it is again in public. So, again, my deepest apology to you all. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Madron. And with that, I'll open it up to public comment. You will be limited to three minutes, but, Robert?
Thank you. Robert Hemsted, Vice Chair, Trinidad Rancheria. So some of the backdrop on this was, I was in the meeting, in the PDT, the comments were, is what I took offense to, and we had a conversation at that point in time. Some of the backdrop is, we reached out and with the letter, we didn't receive a response for an additional six months after we sent an additional email and a second letter. I was questioning why that took so long for the Board of Supervisors and the county to decide to respond to a sovereign nation and another government-to-government consultation type, or to any questions really. So we asked that the affirmation of all federally recognized tribes that possess equal rights and the status under the federal law, and that you guys would make that affirmation. The statements that were made with a tribe and a rancheria, I believe he's had time to do some research, and as he's said, been educated on that. And that's a wonderful thing because they have such broad and broader, much broader precautions throughout the state of California. There's still an estimated 40 rancherias. There was up to 100. A lot of them changed their names and, through the BIA, and went to tribe because of these misunderstandings and accusations that were made against them that belittles them and makes them something less than, even though through the Indian Reorganization Act states that they are equal. So maybe that's part of the education that needed to take place here, and I'm glad that that did. So I want to focus today, you know, that we did receive the apology and appreciate that, and that's to the Trinidad Rancheria and the community. I'm assuming maybe it's to me because I was the one that was actually called out in the meeting. But that should be to, just in general, to all the, all the rancherias, you know? That's, that's what, that's how I took that attack, not just on my community, my people, but all native people that are part of a rancheria because their great-grandmother settled there, and even though they're full-blood Yurok, and they, you know, their families are from Espal Village or up the river off Metta, they're Neranur, so they're local coastal Yuroks. They, their families have three generations there before the Yurok tribe was established. So they decided not to uproot their three generations and be there with their families. So I think that's important to understand. And I got a little flustered, my bad, sorry. So it's really, it's just the equality and the understanding for equal standing of all tribes. All rancherias is what I'm looking for. I do appreciate the public apology and the participants, and we're just asking that we took a stand today for the equality and the affirmation of the equal rights for tribes what we're asking for the board.
Right. Thank you.
Hi, my name is April Sky Hemsted. I represent member seat number two for Trinidad Rancheria. I just want to say thank you for your apology because at the time, we did not agree with the outcome of this investigation due to these reasons. Information that had not been shared with the tribe, including the recording of that meeting, the fact that Madron and friends of West Haven did it without disclosing that to us at the moment. to us at the moment, it's just a common understanding that when meetings are recorded, they should be, the party should be let known. We did not receive this investigation until it was actually published to the public this following early Monday, the 22nd, that we thought was just a little bit, considering that we were the people that were holding the complaint, should have received the investigation report in full before. Steve Madron did indicate that he was not representing the board during this meeting, however, he did not advise anyone of that, but thank you for your apology and making that known now. The investigating report indicated there was three witnesses. If he interviewed the three witnesses, who were they? Because he did not interview the vice chair, who was present during that meeting. We have consistently have opposed, have had you oppose all of our projects that we have brought forward. We have documentation of this and are happy to produce it. Please realize there is a pattern over the last years from Madron and his actions regarding Trinidad Rancheria and all the projects that we bring forward. We refuse to have him continue to assault and feels like an assault on our tribe. I also believe that the board should have responded to our formal request for the government government consultation, even if it was just going to be between our tribe and two committee representatives. I did hear that you guys did now appoint and have a committee for that, and so I hope going forward that we are able to schedule nation-to-nation and government-to-government meetings with you guys. We do request that the board appoint a person to represent Humboldt County on our project development team that will be fair and balanced in their review. And now I'd like to turn it over to our CEO, Jackie.
Thank you for the time today. The tribal council fully disagrees with the outcome of this report. We do not believe that the investigation was thoroughly conducted. There were only three people interviewed. There was numerous people in that meeting. And also based on the recording, that should have been brought forward immediately, and Caltrans and the tribe should have been aware of that. We spoke to Caltrans about that, in fact, within the last few days, and they said, no. Caltrans has a policy of not recording. So why is it that Supervisor Madron and two people from West Haven recorded a meeting, did not share that with the rest of us? What was their, what was the driving factor behind that? And why bring it out in the end? You know, that, that's not appropriate. It's disrespectful to, to the tribe. The other thing in the investigation, it referred to the election between Supervisor Madron and then Supervisor Ryan Sumberg. Why was that considered? Was that insinuation that the tribe was retaliating? Again, that was inappropriate. We have articles. We know what he said. We know what we, we said. We could have shared that information. We were unable to do so because we were not asked. So this investigation, on its face, looks extremely limited and biased, and there is no even looking into the Indian law involved in this, in this situation. And, you know, Councilwoman April Sky just said, we requested government-to-government consultation. We never received a response to that G-to-G request. We received one letter from CAO Alicia Hayes saying, we've received your letter in December, and this will go to investigation. The matter of government-to-government was never addressed. We must have a different representative on the project development team. We must. Supervisor Madron does have a conflict of interest. He owns land in West Haven. He has rental properties in West Haven. He's opposed to all of the development that Trinidad Rancheria is doing. So, I mean, you cannot settle this investigation based on this report. It's lacking and it's not accurate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Swatsky, I would also like to apologize to the tribe, because I had the same perception that Supervisor Madron did regarding the difference between rancherias. Now, I've been educated, so I think some good things are coming from this. I strongly suggest in question, of course, the tribe has had the full ability to do their own investigation, and I encourage them to do so if that's their desire. I do find that, I question why Caltrans does not record their meetings themselves to have a record. It's, in my opinion, quite naive or very not, very not smart to have an administrative record when you're making decisions and you want to show, show to base what you have going on there. I can record this meeting, I could be recording it right now, and I'm not required to tell you in any way, shape, or form I'm doing so. If I'm not able to do so, please let me know, because that's a misperception on my part. The, the action, and I really appreciate the apology, and I didn't hear it accepted, but it sounded like it maybe was accepted by the tribe, and that's a good thing. I personally feel that, I don't believe Steve Madron has opposed all their projects. I'm not speaking for him, but my understanding was the original project that started this all was a motel that had a motif that was very characteristic of a tribal structure, instead was being replaced in a viewscape by the Coastal Commission, allowing probably a five-story Marriott's or whatever major kind of box thing there. Public, I personally supported the, the project that they had for themselves to have there of something of the nature that I felt would be, be characteristic of the tribe. And if they decide to move forward with that, I will continue to support them having the right to have their tribal symmetry. It's always interesting here, I feel like I have a very good working relationship with most, if not all, of the tribes, communicate with them on a regular basis. At one time, I got ahold of the linguistics for the Hoopa tribe, and I said, what is your translation for karma? And he gave it to me a couple days later, and I heard in their office, they put that up above their, their thing as far as karma goes. So I do support, and I do, I do feel that the main thing we have to speak about here is, did Supervisor Madron disclose that he was, was not representing the whole board? And I think he's admitted that he didn't. There are many instances when you folks don't disclose, such as, I noticed, 30 seconds, Supervisor Wilson is the only person in the Coastal Commission who lists himself as being 3rd District Supervisor of Humboldt County. There are none of the other ones disclose that, and some people would say that might be best to remove, because that may, people may infer from that that you are representing the county when you are on the Coastal Commission. So anytime you come across things of this nature, I highly recommend you go a little above and beyond to make sure that that's totally clear who's representing the county and who's not. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Have a comment?
Yeah. I like your necklace.
Thank you. Ayukli Squeana Kechoy, Nek Now Fawn Chiguri Murphy, and I am the elected chairperson of the Resigani Rancheria, a federally recognized tribe of Yurok people. Our Aboriginal territory extends into Humboldt County, hence why we're here, and I'm taking this opportunity to introduce myself. We are, like I said, we're a tribe of Yurok people. We are in support of Trinidad Rancheria, of Big Lagoon Rancheria, and we all share the same Aboriginal territory as the Yurok tribe. We are no different in the federal eyes of, are in the eyes of the federal government, and we should be treated as such. The disparaging remarks that were made, and thank you for your apology, but they cause trauma to already traumatized people. They cause, you know, hurt that's unnecessary, and they cause a false perception out in the public. So that's why we're here today, to speak our minds, to let you know who we are, and invite any of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors to come to our tribal headquarters in Clamath, meet the Resigani, find out who we are. This invitation is specifically for Supervisor Madron, because it is in your district. Well, not necessarily your district, but we would like the opportunity to have you know us, have you know that we are, you know, we're a tribe of Yurok people. We are no different, and we just, we want to take the opportunity to, to, yeah, to say that, and I'm getting really nervous, but I thank you, everybody, for the, the time, and like I said, we are very supportive with the other tribes that are here, and that unity and that support, that is in the spirit of collaboration, which I come here today, and I thank you all for your time and for listening to me, and it was very nice to meet all of you. Waaka.
I think I can speak for the board. It was very nice meeting you. Thank you. I delivered fuel to the Resigani, probably 40-some-odd years ago, to the gravel operation, so, thank you for being here.
My name is Katrine Hohmann. I live in McKinleyville. This $20,000 report fails to show that the Caltrans incident is not an isolated one. This public comment by Supervisor Madron on Board of Supervisor, County of Humboldt Stationary, submitted January 2021 to the Trinidad City Council Meeting, in opposition to a joint project between Trinidad Rancheria and City of Trinidad, there's one paragraph full of false and misleading information that served to reinforce the supervisor's opposition to the joint project. June 2019 California Coastal Commission Meeting, Supervisor Steve Madron stood in front of the commission accusing the Trinidad Rancheria of blocking public access to the beach. That turned out to be false allegation. Misinformation is damaging, but when it comes from a public leader with titles behind a name or an official stationary, consequences can be crippling. The people of the Trinidad Rancheria do not deserve this. They have been good neighbors who should be thanked for their service to the community. Volunteering as crossguards at the school, offering fundraising venues for nonprofits, being stewards of scenic drive, we've seen major improvements to the harbor property, new public bathrooms, all funded by the tribe. Currently, the tribe is finishing a stormwater project in Trinidad and has been indispensable in the community's quest to save the iconic Trinidad Memorial Lighthouse. The tribe has spent countless hours, thousands of dollars, and is providing its land to save the beloved memorial for the community. This report is disappointing. Supervisor Madron's conduct is irresponsible and inappropriate and must be corrected. I don't think that Supervisor Madron is a racist, as it has been suggested. I do believe that he is discriminating against the Rancheria and misuses his position and his title, which you all share. This is a breach of trust, and that betrayal puts your whole board and the county at risk. You need to act and put a stop to that. Wrongdoing needs to be acknowledged. The official apology was necessary. This is an opportunity to educate yourself and the public on this matter. Affirm, as the Board of Supervisors, together, that all federally recognized Indian tribes, including Trinidad Rancheria, possess equal rights and status under federal, state, and law. And I'd like to remind you of what Supervisor Madron said a few months ago. An apology is only the first step. Ultimately, it's to embrace the change that is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. How are you?
My name is Elaine Weinrebb. I live in West Haven. There seem to be several different issues confounded and commingled in this complaint. First of all, the issue about whether Supervisor Madron represented the entire board or not. Humboldt County has five districts for a reason. The county is simply too large and complex for each of the supervisors to know everything about all of the districts. As voters, we choose one individual to represent our particular area, to know what is going on in it, and expect him or her to mediate disputes and solve problems. We don't expect the same level of service from the other four supervisors, each of which has their own area of responsibility. If there was a problem in Garberville, we wouldn't expect Supervisor Bone or Supervisor Arroyo to solve it. If the entire board had to be involved for every single decision, they would have to meet all day, five days a week. Supervisor Madron represents the 5th District, and so far has done a great job of doing so. Second, the spurious complaint of racism. I have seen photos of Supervisor Madron's extended family and can assure you that it is multi-ethnic and interracial. There is no way you can possibly accuse this individual of racism. Third, the issue of what was said at this meeting and how it was said. I attended that meeting. It had to do with the plans of the Trinidad Rancheria to create a freeway interchange that would have impacted its West Haven neighbors. Supervisor Madron was there to learn about the issues and possibly help mediate a solution acceptable to everyone. An issue arose during the discussion about the historical differences between rancherias and tribes. I am not a historian, but I do know that the situation is complicated and has changed over the course of the years. Supervisor Madron stated at the time what he believed were true facts. There was disagreement over this, and the discussion got heated, but at no point were bad words said. Let's let this foolish issue drop. Thank you.
All right, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Jump on in for a minute then.
Okay. For, I will say that definitely, from the public comment, there are a few items here that are disparate, I would say. But I'm going to speak to just one of them, probably the most boring one, I would say, and for the moment, which just has to do with the, with the, with the, not with the complaint, but with the finding, and with our code of conduct and the language within our code of conduct relative to the finding, and so, and I don't want to, you know, sound litigious about this or anything, but it, I just want to speak to the words of it, and then how it actually manifests in the job that we do as supervisors, and what the intent was when it was created under our code of conduct. So the, the, the item is with relationship to Section B9 Supervisor's Code of Conduct, and I, and I, and I will say that I, I will, I will come to the conclusion that I disagree with the investigator's interpretation of this, based on both I, what I believe to be the intent of the board, which he, which the investigator was not per, per view to, and, and also the real-world application, I guess is the way I'd look at it. So the, I'll just read that the, it just says, "Board members shall represent the official policies or positions of the entire Board of Supervisors to the best of their ability when designated as delegates for this purpose." That's the first sentence. It is one paragraph. It's not very, if, if you are detaching that from the next sentence, usually you would have it as a separate paragraph when you're, when you're doing policy. So I do believe the intent was to combine these two things. "When presenting their individual opinions and positions, board members shall explicitly state they do not represent the opinion of the entire board." We have, as board members, we are delegated by this board to represent this board on multiple bodies, you know, specifically both to JPAs, Joint Powers Authorities, and to state associations, such as CSAC, RCRC, and then, you know, our, our, our other, again, our Joint Powers Authorities. What this is trying to do is to make sure, and hopefully, that the board members within those organizations, as represented by this board, do their best to, to represent the board and to state the, those intentions clearly. I will say that that's what we try to do in practice. I would also say that, you know, sometimes the, the boards, the board members may or may not be totally accurate in this regard, but we do our best. And, and I think that that's what this is really referring to, and I think that it interpreted that way, it does, it does a good job of that. I will say, however, when taken explicitly, the sentence, the second sentence, "When presenting their individual opinions and positions, board members shall explicitly board members shall explicitly state they do not represent the opinion of the entire board," without context, just by itself, that means that in every conversation we have with family members, whether we're on the radio, whether we're in the public at any time, we would have to differentiate explicitly whether our opinion about something is our own or the board's. That is just, it's not practical in the way that we communicate in the community, and it's not necessarily an expectation. And so I do think that this, these two sentences should be taken as a whole. And under that paradigm, I think that the determination made in this isn't isn't accurate. Because I think that, I do know that when asked whether or not the whether or not the, Caltrans was asked specifically, that there's no indication the board has authority to appoint members to the PTD, which is, and in discussion with Caltrans personnel is explained that there are actually two separate but related project teams. There is the PDT that is overseen by Caltrans, and it would be Caltrans's authority that would determine whether or not there is, if there is a designee from this board that would go to that. And the PTD works in conjunction with the Trinidad Rancheria, but it is open for the public to attend and does not have a specific county representative chosen by the board. The second project team is overseen by the Trinidad Rancheria, and according to Caltrans personnel, the Trinidad Rancheria project team would have the authority not to include participants as they see fit and also does not have specific county representation chosen by the board. So I'm just putting it in context, this, our policy currently basically, I interpret that meaning that unless we designate someone specific to carry sort of the water of this board specifically designated by the board, that that's what this policy is referring to and does not refer to the incident that we're talking about today. That's just my read, my very boring read of this, of the policy and sort of the context that it's in. On the other side of that, I will say that the statements and the of Supervisor Madron were both inaccurate and offensive, and I don't make that determination. Trinidad Rancheria makes that determination. We don't decide for others what is offensive. That's not our, that's, we basically do our best to not be to offend, in our words, and then adjust, not just our attitudes and understanding, but our overall arc towards understanding when we are inaccurate and offensive. And both through education and really soul searching. We just have to do it, and it's a constant internal battle that all of us have. Doesn't matter where you come from, what you are, we're always seeking understanding within ourselves and within the greater context. And I'm hoping that this, our board constantly, not constantly, but sees these come to us just like every other institution. And we as a society have been doing a lot more of this in the last decade or so, and I am grateful for that. And I'm hoping that it leads us to a better outcome as we move forward. So with that being said, I just wanted to give my opinion and thoughts on sort of the results of this investigation and also acknowledge, I'm hearing what the tribe is saying, their dissatisfaction with relationship to the determination. Mine's just different in terms, I'm also dissatisfied. I do see that this result is, I think, a misinterpretation of our policy. And I would ask that maybe if we need to adjust this policy in the future to make it more clear, then I think we should do that. And I could have more comments later, but I don't want to take up all the time.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you through the Vice Chair. So thank you to Supervisor Wilson. We continue to have issues with this policy when it comes, when things like this come forward. And, you know, we have an issue that comes up, and we do all the things, and then it doesn't work right. So I don't know, and this probably isn't the time to say that we need to work on this policy, maybe. Maybe there needs to be an overhaul, because each time we find these holes, admittedly by lots of people. I have a question, two things actually, and I guess my question would be to Zach. So there seems to be some questioning around they, the tribe would like a different representative. Is that something we would address today? And I don't think so, but I wanted to be clear on that.
As Supervisor Wilson mentioned, as he read from the staff report, every indication is that your board hasn't actually delegated anyone in an official capacity. Admittedly, I don't even know how that process would work, to be honest. So it may be that Caltrans needs to request that and say, "Board of Supervisors, please delegate someone for that purpose."
Okay, so that's, maybe we could have that direction for staff to reach out to Caltrans and say, to have a designee. I don't know. I'm trying to address the issues as they come. Also, I guess I would like Supervisor Madron, if he could maybe elaborate on, I heard several references to the meeting being recorded, and I thought Caltrans had recorded that, so maybe I got the information wrong. Would you be able to address that?
Sure, yeah. I wasn't aware of it myself until the investigation began. I did not make the recording. It was a meeting that was funded with public funds, and so there was an assumption that it was a public meeting, even though it wasn't really advertised for the public. And so I became aware of the recording later. I will say that I think it's great there was a recording, because one can make all kinds of statements about what somebody said, but when you have a recording, that's what they actually said. And there was a difference, and that's what the investigator found. You know, just to be clear, what I said was that there was a difference of opinion about these issues. I didn't state that I stood on one side or the other of the issue. I stated there was a difference of opinion. It was ill-advised. I should not have treaded into that water, because I really don't have the education and background to really have been even suggesting the issue at all. And I know that offended people, and whether or not I meant to or not doesn't matter. If somebody's offended, then that's a problem. So I've tried to address that.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then to the tribe, I want to recognize that the information you guys have brought forward today, I continue to try to educate myself and learn about the proper ways, because I don't know it either. I don't know. And so I really appreciate it. I'm going to take your offer up to come up and visit in Klamath. Thank you for that. And I do want to recognize that what Supervisor Wilson said, and him and I have spoke, not about this topic, but in general, if a person, it's what a person's perception of offense is, and the tribe is definitely, their heart is hurting from the comments, and I want to recognize that. I apologize just because it's hurtful. It has been hurtful. I appreciate and thank Supervisor Madron for his public apology and recognizing that and his education to educate himself on it moving forward. I was in a similar position, not that I offended the tribe, but I offended someone, and it's difficult to sit up here and to admit that and to say, "I'm sorry," and then for, you know, to have that accepted and move forward from this point. And so I just want to say thank you to you all for coming and for bringing this out. I also wanted to address the letter, an email that we received right after this happened that didn't get addressed by any of us, and it slipped through the cracks, and I think by all of us, which I apologize for. When I got notified, I went back and searched through my emails and did find it. And I apologize myself for not seeing it and reacting to it, because this maybe could have gotten solved much sooner. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. It has to be up to the chair. I don't.
Hang on a sec, Jack. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't really tell what's happening in the chamber, so I hope this is a good time to jump in and just say, you know, I appreciate Trinidad Rancheria representatives coming, you know, council and CEO, as well as Rozagini Rancheria being present today. And I will just say that I fully affirm and support tribal sovereignty and the right to self-government of federally recognized tribes. And that fully includes recognized tribes that are rancherias and recognized tribes that are, have tribe after their name. I understand that all are recognized tribes with the same rights. And I think we will continue to need to learn about how to work effectively with tribes when there are differing perspectives, either between ourselves as county leaders and tribal representatives or amongst tribes over projects. So we definitely need to continue learning. One of the things that I recommended to staff some time ago and that they were looking into is around training with respect to perhaps having a body that does training provide some information around these matters. And I recommended, I believe it was the National Indian Justice Center, which was based in Sonoma County at the time, but it sounds like they're not really providing the training that I had the opportunity to go to many years ago around California Indian law, which was incredibly helpful and informative. But anyway, if we can avail ourselves of something like that, I think it would be really beneficial. I know I still need to learn, but sitting through, you know, a full-day training to understand what sovereignty really means and what it means in that government-to-government relation, relationship was impactful. And I also am truly sorry that this harmed the relationship between our governments. And I look forward to upholding sovereignty and working effectively together in the future. I will also note that when it comes to specifically state agency projects, my experience as an elected has really just been that, you know, whether it's Caltrans or other state agencies, that they generally do tend to reach out to the person who's, who represents that area, regardless of the, you know, the county or municipality involved. And that we often don't have a formal request to appoint someone for specific projects. Often, it'll just be reaching out to the, you know, elected official who represents that area. And so I can understand that that seems to have been what happened here. And I'm not sure that we will probably appoint people to every single project. I think that's pretty unlikely. And I know in my case, I go to things that are in my district whenever I can, whenever I'm invited. And I go to listen and learn and participate, but also to hear from constituents and from agency representatives. So all of that, all of that said, you know, the other, the only other body I can think of that we all have representatives or that, you know, all the local agencies have representatives to that deals with transportation is HCOG, the Humboldt County Association of Governments. So that might be another avenue to address the question of who represents, you know, the perspective on transportation matters. But, and our representative to that is Supervisor Madron as our chair. So anyway, I think that's all I need to say about that, but I appreciate you coming today and the chance to address this.
And I guess, before I say, some of us did reach out to the tribe immediately after giving the original letter and did what we could. And I think the committee or the trilogy was in process. So I'm not, it was a slow process, as we discussed earlier. But Supervisor Wilson.
Just a couple of things. I'll add my voice to, and really just read it right from the tribe's letter, affirmation and acknowledgement that all federally recognized Indian tribes, including Trinidad Rancheria, possess equal rights and status under federal and state law. It's a pretty easy thing to say, because I believe it. And so there, and I think that we're in agreement with the relationship to that. In regards to sort of the, I would say, the bumpy road associated with tribal engagement is, we have, in, I think it's in our strategic plan from, or at least, yeah, from our last strategic plan, I think even this one, which is to create the position for tribal liaison, because of course, in Humboldt County, it's, we have, as a county in California, you know, probably one of the most diverse, and certainly we have the largest and the tribe and the biggest reservation, and then every, and then all the other reservations or tribes and tribalities in, for any county, you know, as for any county. And we still don't have really an established process as a county governance to do that. Do we have intention? Yes, there is intention to get there. I do know that, that even through some of these processes, as we've seen, the state governance is only just beginning to get their act together with relationship to this, and they're doing a pretty good job relative to what it was 10 years ago, and certainly relative to what it was 20 years ago. They're going to get better, and we're going to be looking for support from them as well as the federal government to do that. If you were at our budget hearings yesterday, you will know that it's a tough time to add personnel at this moment, but I can tell you that the intention is certainly there with relationship to our job, both as supervisors, but also as an institution to have that government-to-government outreach. We do have this committee that exists that should be enacted at any moment. I mean, what that means is, I suppose, and maybe we can talk about that at another meeting, what that really, what functionally that means. And maybe we need some policy really specific around that. So this would be kind of the last thing I'm going to say, unless there's more discussion, which is, this is, I really appreciate Trinidad Rancheria keeping on it, like, and keeping on us, and by us, I mean all of us, to move in this direction and be educated. It helps. Thanks.
Well, with, Jackie, did you have one more thing real quick?
Thank you, Vice Chair Bone. Point of clarification, and I have researched this, and this is what Caltrans has said. This project development team is actually led by Trinidad Rancheria. We pay Caltrans for their services, for their technical services. They are not leading this project. Trinidad Rancheria is leading the project. We are the lead agency of this project. Therefore, we can formally request from the board that you appoint someone officially to that project development team. I have researched this. I know that this is accurate. We've asked them to request an appointment. They've said, "No, because we are not the lead agency on this project. You're paying us for this service." Second point, I think is really important. Supervisor Madron chairs HCOG. He is opposed to our project. He will bring that bias forward as he makes decisions. The money that we spend has been federal dollars. We have gotten a few state, small amounts of money, but he is adamantly opposed us getting money through CTC, through HCOG. So we, you have to realize how deep this bias goes. Appreciate the last comment. So we, you, you have to realize how deep this bias goes. Appreciate the last comment.
Okay. And, yeah, I like, I think everybody's made some great comments and I'll, I'll tell you, I think I graduated the same year as Garth because he was bigger than I was in football. And Ryan to this day is probably one of my best friends, so. And I don't think the campaign had a thing to do with it. He's happy where he's at. He was glad to serve his two terms. I've also been kind of in this seat, made apologies and then everybody told me it wasn't sincere enough. So I think Supervisor Madrona said he was sorry. I think it was sincere. But as we sit here, we've had, we've been up here on other occasion. I, I, I think the apology's been done, the recognition's been done. I can't vote for a censure. The only reason is, is it doesn't mean diddly. And I just hate that we do stuff up here that doesn't mean diddly. And censure doesn't do anything but censures them. I think he's, he's, he's taken his whooping up here today. But I, I don't think this, my only issue with this, and I have great respect for Ms. Holman. I love her kids. But I think this is an issue that goes long before 2020 and long before that. And I think that, 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 that it's a festering issue. And with that apology, I heard Supervisor Madrona said he was going to try harder. I don't know if that means to be more welcoming to ideas coming from the Rancheria or just sorry for what has happened in the past. And, and, and that's, that's what he has to decide. I am sorry. I mean, I've, I've had no more to do with tribes than anybody else, except I got to live on, live in hoopla with Deanie Davis, which is a, you know, and Joe Davis actually lived with me when he was going to high school. I, I love Deanie. But, and then, and knowing Garth and, and stuff and, and my own Bear River. And I know, I see Virgil out there, Resugeni again, I did, that was a, we hurt the feelings, but we hurt the cultural feelings of our indigenous people. And it doesn't matter. They're federally-recognized. And even if you weren't federally-recognized, you should be recognized, you know? I mean, Garth, if your mom was here today, she'd be raising hell. But I think what's been said has been said. I don't think a censure brings anything forward. We went through this with another supervisor. We went through this on, and we actually did censure a planning commissioner. And that's just my feelings, but I, I, going forward as Supervisor Wilson, we can do, we can all do better. I think we have to be more cognizant. We need to be more aware of what's going on. I know I hear that all the time. I know I, I don't, I don't think every room we walk into says, hey, when I speak today, I'm not speaking as a supervisor. I don't think we have to say that in front of our families or, you know, when the restroom attendant or anything like that. I think when we're talking in a public meeting and we're interest, introduced as supervisor from the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, you have to say, I'm not here as a supervisor. I'm here as, or I'm just here representing my own district. I'm here to listen. I'm, I'm pretty good about that. I do 50 auctions a year and I say, I'm not here as a supervisor at all. Because we can't be supervisors 24/7 because we make mistakes and people want to make big deals when we make mistakes. So we have to make less mistakes, obviously. So I, that's kind of where I stand on it. I apologize to the tribe that you had to put up with this. I apologize that it took so long. I think we've had this discussion. It should not have taken this long and that's something we have to work on if we're going to actually think we're going to have a relationship with, with, with our tribes and rancherias. So with that.
Vice Chair Bone, I have Supervisor Arroyo with her hand up.
Oh, okay. Supervisor Arroyo and then Bushnell.
Thank you. I just had a clarification about the two-by-two, or the two-person board committee that we set up the ad hoc. My understanding was when we, as a board, appointed Supervisor Madrona and Supervisor Bone to that, that it was specifically to address questions related to the, to ICWA, the Indian Child Welfare Act and implementation of child welfare-related matters. I was wondering if anyone could clarify that? Because my understanding was that that was not a two-person committee to deal with all consultation matters related to tribes.
And I, and, and yes, but I, and just for clarification, for the last few years I've been doing, I've been going to, with our DHHS, I've been going to Trinidad on child welfare services and ICWA to their board meetings. And I haven't been to one for about six months, but I went to quite a few there in a row. And I go at any bequest of Connie Beck, so.
Great. I just wanted to be clear on, we, we mentioned earlier that we did have that as a mechanism. And I, I just, I, when we initially appointed two people to it, you know, that, that was the way it was framed. So could staff clarify?
Yes, I can confirm that your assessment is correct. And upon a motion, staff could be directed to return with an item to appoint two representatives for this specific government-to-government consultation. That group could also, through those discussions, speak with the Rancheria on an appointment to their project committee.
So if we brought that forward in the motion, would it be the two people that are sitting there now to further their responsibilities or have two more people? I would, if I remember right, the discussion was we had a majority of the tribes in our, in our district. So that was the reason the two of us were chosen, so.
That would be a discussion point of either continue forward with the two appointees or designate two new appointees. That would be at the discretion of your board.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion if you want. Never mind.
Please go ahead. It's fine.
Never mind. I'm going to back down right now.
They're doing rock, paper, scissors to see who does it. Supervisor Arroyo?
I can't hear because someone's mic was off, so I, I, I'll just wait.
Supervisor Wilson, will you make your motion? Go back to what, where we were originally.
Sure. I'll, I'll make a motion that we create an ad hoc subcommittee with relationship to government-to-government discussions with Trinidad Rancheria. And that Supervisor Madrona and Bone can do that work. Not specific to this project, but specific to trying to formulate what that representation may or may not look like so that we can come and work with Caltrans to figure this, just to figure this out. That's kind of what I was looking at. No? Okay. I'm going to back down.
Well, no, I just, I was going to say, just Trinidad or we're, we're doing to work with all tribes?
Can, well, I don't know. That's a good question.
Because I'm just.
Hang that out there. We do need to come up with policy around our tribal liaison work that we said is in our, I think it's in our general plan actually, that we were from 2017. But also, you know, what, what, what is going to be our policy working, moving forward? And if that's where we want to go, that's, that seems like a big heavier lift than sort of just the current situation that we're talking about right now. So we have to pick kind of which one we want to do here.
Do I have a second on that for discussion? No second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I, I do have a comment on it if I may.
All right. I've got Supervisor Bushnell before you and then you can comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm a little confused, you all are, but first of all, Trinidad Rancheria has requested to not have Supervisor Madrona involved. And so I don't know what, what we're, and I understand that's tragic Supervisor Madrona, but I, I don't want to, I think we need to respect, you know, address that. I, I don't know how to do that, but they're out there shaking their heads and so I don't want to add to this. And Supervisor Wilson, your, your motion directly kind of contradicts what the request was. Secondly, I'd like to say that I, I also am not in favor of a motion of censure. I think that bringing this to the board and getting it out and talking about it is, and addressing it and Supervisor Madrona recognizing that he need, that he needs to do that work better and know better what he's saying, as we all at times fumble. I also do think that, you know, I did hear lots of things about when you're in your district, you're representing, you know, your district or your board. I often, most times always say, I don't know the opinion of my board, but this is my opinion and I can bring it to my board. I, I recognize that all the time because I don't want to talk for my board without them being present. And I think that it's, you know, and I, I don't talk as a supervisor to my family. You referenced that earlier. And so I don't say I'm not being the supervisor right now. My family knows that. So I think that, you know, we all need to recognize those lines and, and, and not blur them so much, I guess. But just, I do think Supervisor Madrona was sincere in his apology and is committed to working towards a better relationship in the future. And that's what I heard. But I do, I guess, if Chairman, our Garth, could you come up for a minute? Because he was the one that talked for the, and so, well, you're the only one that isn't restricted by the, I'm sorry.
What can I do for you?
I think I can ask a que, I just want to know, like, is it your guys' intention not to have Supervisor Madrona? What, how do you feel about the motion?
Well, I don't, I, I was kind of confused on the motion too.
Okay, me too.
But we, what I asked for was to put someone else on the committee. I mean, as far as the rest of the stuff that he does, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Maybe someday we'll work together. I don't know.
And I probably stepped out of bounds and maybe Supervisor Bone should have asked you up, but I want to know what I'm voting for, so.
You were perfect. I think that's why, and I think that's why we have a two-member committee. I mean, I'm not going to go if somebody says, I don't want him there, I don't know if I'll go. And I think, I would imagine Supervisor, because I think that's one of the reasons. And I don't know, I was doing the child welfare service stuff for the, for DHHS. So I'm, that's where we're, that's why we have two people so that they have an option. It wasn't saying you, we're both going to go or anything else because we're busy enough as it is. So I think I understood that part. I, or at least that, that was my understanding of it.
Vice Chair Bone.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I think the matter of whether we're going to appoint a committee to address all tribal consultations moving forward is something that should be agendized separately. If we're just talking about how to resolve this matter and with whom, I, I, I do think that makes sense to, to determine in this session. But the, the larger question that, you know, is tied to our general plan and tied to many future projects around, you know, who represents the county in consultations, I think is a bigger question that I would personally want to see agendized separately so that we could have participation from, from multiple tribes who, who were not probably aware that this was going to be part of the conversation. So I, I do think that that's important. And honestly, you know, the, the ICWA committee, it made sense that people who are most familiar with the history of child welfare in the county, which was certainly not me, would, would volunteer themselves for that. But I, I might have pushed a little harder if I knew that that might transform into a committee related to all future tribal consultations. I might have wanted to be on it or at least put my name forward or at least discuss that further. So anyway, I, 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 and I also think there's a certain difficulty around, I, I guess, making requests that supervisors be or not be involved in these things on a project-by-project basis. I, I guess I think we should make a comprehensive decision about who represents the county on these consultations. And that, that's a big and delicate matter. So anyway, those are my thoughts on this subject, but I, I hope we can, I'm also, I feel that we have addressed the matter and don't need to, to go towards censure.
Supervisor Henan?
Through the chair. I, just to Supervisor Arroyo's point, I think the only action, and I'll let county council smite me down if I'm wrong here, the only action that can really happen today is censure. However, multiple directives could be given to staff related to the code of conduct or bringing a board item back to create a separate committee. So I think, if I'm not wrong, I think that's where we're at.
Okay. And I, and I'm, I'm fine with that. I think, I think somewhere near, we have to, earlier today, we were talking about tobacco use on tribal lands and everything else. They can do whatever they want on their tribal lands, basically. So I mean, I, I, I think the idea, when we set up this committee, the committee's going to be able to talk with the tribe to see what, how we can help them achieve what they want to achieve. I, I think on, on what it pertains to them, if I'm not, sovereignty and that, along those lines. So I'm just, I'm just, my feelings and as we learn more and more, we'll know more about this. But so with that, which one are you going to talk, council, CAO?
I was just going to say, if I could help move this along, maybe. A motion to accept the rapport and decline to censure is the motion that, or to censure, but I'm hearing a decline to, is the action before you today. That said, staff have heard that you would like us to review the code of conduct policy to potentially explore opportunities for cultural sensitivity training, to return with an item to appoint representatives to a government-to-government consultation, potentially around transportation or something, it does have to be a little bit focused in scope. And that group could further discuss and bring back recommendations on representation with the Caltrans project.
And the only, the only thing I would say on that, if we're going to do the tribal sensitivity and everything else, I would like to have the CAO's officers get a hold of the Tribal Chiefs Association and see who they would recommend for that training because that's Northern California tribal associations that, that all our tribes belong to and a few others. And I think that would give us a, I'm sure they have some ideas who could do that training or somebody in-house that could come in or more than one and do it underneath their guidance. Because we're going to be learning about them. We should be learning from them.
Absolutely. You have a really great diversity, equity and inclusion manager who I am sure will be able to put something wonderful together.
Supervisor Bushnell?
We have a first and a second on a motion, so what do we do with that?
I can remove, I can rescind my motion.
I accept.
Okay. And then I will, I accept the language proposed by the, the CAO with relationship to the motion. I do want to just clarify on the direction to staff with relationship to the creation, you know, bringing back an, an item where we discuss, putting together a committee that I think broadly looks at our tribal liaison and tribal relations policy and policy. Wait, what did I just say? I just said it twice, didn't I? I say, sorry, sorry about that. Happens occasionally. Our, our, yeah, yeah, our policy around that. So it doesn't address necessarily, you know, the direct request with relationship to Trinidad Rancheria. And I apologize for that. I just don't think we're like equipped to do that today under, you know, the, the construct of this meeting. But I do believe we will see some action with relationship to that, shift to that moving forward. So if there's a second, it'd be great.
I'll second. And with that, that does not take away the standing. I'll second. And with that, that does not take away the standing committee right now, that is probably one of the biggest issues we're facing, is child welfare services and the ICWA problem across the board, and that first and foremost. So, with that, there's been a motion and a second. Call for a roll call vote.
Okay. Do you mind if I just clarify? Just clarify?
That would be wonderful, for the audience would love.
So, the motion itself is just to receive and file this report and decline to censure. That's the, the extent of the motion. Okay, good. I have it. The others was just staff recognition.
Staff direction.
Did you already say it?
No, it has to do with, it has to do with Caltrans, and that, you know, we have to understand that Caltrans has some, I don't even know where we have that relationship with Caltrans in this, because really, this is a Caltrans proj, and I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. It's also, it's a tribal project, being sort of administered through Caltrans, or whatever that is. We have to, I, I guess, I'm hoping to get clarification on that, because what is in our staff report is not exactly what was expressed today. And so, since we're, it's not jiving, I want to make sure that at some point, we get better information on that. It doesn't, obviously can't be in this moment, but I think we are going to need that, so.
We can ask for that, and you got it completely backwards. It's a Trinidad Rancharia project with Caltrans, if I heard, if I heard that right from the general manager.
Right. And again, that's testimony, and I, I just, we're just going to need, we're just going to need all that information on that. That's great. Thanks.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Clarification on the motion, please. It, I took the motion as having, encompassing the direction for staff as well, not just the no censure vote. So, someone had said, no, that wasn't part of it, but I believe that it is, and would like, can we get some clarification?
Yes. The staff report only allows for you to address the sustained finding as per the code of conduct, which allows for action to censure should your board choose. That said, staff is abundantly clear on the direction that you would like for us to return with some additional items. So, so that will take place.
So, then the motion is just a no vote of censure?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Are we ready for a roll call? We'll start with you, Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrona?
I abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's the end of the day. Supervisor Bone?
Yes, and separate apology to you guys.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, I will let Supervisor Madrona adjourn us.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone, for running that. Again, thank you to the Rancharia and Resigmane and all those, and I will take you up on that offer. I will be in contact. So, with that, I believe we are adjourned. Apparently, yes.